Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. So we'll call Jared.
Commission, get in.
Here.
Commission, why not?
Here.
Vice Chair Lee. President Wilbinsky.
Yes.
Your. Commission Vlardi.
Yep.
All attendants.
Thank you. There was an executive session held prior to the meeting to discuss litigation, Pocono Township versus Brown. A public comment limited to three minutes per person, please state your name, and if you're a township resident, is there anybody in the audience, Joe?
Good evening, Joe Folsom, taxpayer. I'd just like to give a shout out, she's not here, Jennifer Gambino, on what a wonderful job she did last weekend with the food truck festival. Um, I think it succeeded expectations from last year. So, big shout out to her, the road crew, and the fire police. They worked tirelessly all, all weekend long.
No doubt, Joe. Thank you very much. Joe. Anyone else in the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Veronica Romansky. I own a property in Bartensville, had it for about forty-five years. A quick thank you to Lindsay and Amber and zoning and to Patrick and to the police for responding to me. I've been rather persistent about some issues I'm having regarding parking. I understand that the zoning people are getting ready to kind of review the zoning code, and even if they're not, I have some thoughts to share regarding that. I wish there was language in there about parking. It seemed to me in the seventies and the eighties, it was a given that you would park on your own property, and if you couldn't, you would park adjacent to your own property. It doesn't seem to be the case anymore, and I wish there might be some language about that. In particular, I've been having an issue with an eighteen wheeler in my neighborhood who's been parking about five hundred to six hundred feet away from his own property and parking at mine. And the active hours for that truck have been in the middle of the night, so I've been woken up, and I understand that he doesn't wish to disturb his own household by looking at and hearing the truck, but it seems like there, there could be something in zoning to help with that. Additionally, because of that truck, other trucks have been showing up in the neighborhood, and last week I spoke to a truck driver who did not live in Bartensville, has nothing to do with Barton Glen, was parked nose to nose convoy style on the street, and I approached him and casually asked what he was doing there, and he said he saw other trucks there, so he thought it was one of those truck rest parking areas. I don't know if anybody in the current police force remembers the good old days when Bartensville had two casual informal truck rest areas. They were a nightmare. They were a nightmare for everybody, including the police. I don't want to go back to that, so I'm hoping for some, um, some help from zoning, maybe some language. I don't want to be overregulated, but something that might, um, help control number of trucks and where trucks park.
I'm going to suggest that you reach out to Mr. Belvin and schedule a meeting, and maybe he can include the police, uh, the chief at that meeting to discuss these issues further.
Okay.
And to come up with a resolution, and if zoning needs to get involved, then I'm sure, I'm sure they will.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry for your, your headaches.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Cheryl Parks, um, taxpayer. I just wanted to give everybody a update. I'm still waiting for a subpoena for the last dog loose incident. And hmm, so far we haven't had any more, so that's good. I do want to say though, that the last, uh, magistrate meeting where they were found guilty, um, the officer came and told us that if they had to pay the fines, that they would just have to have more litters of puppies. So they're already over the amount that they need for a state license, so I'm hoping somebody's pursuing that. They, their lawyer also, um, wrote a letter to Mr. DeVito and said if they had, if they exceeded the number of dogs they needed, that they would uh, apply for it on their own, so I don't know if that's happening or not. And just wanted to give you an update. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Edward Gualtieri, resident. I live at one fifty-four Ruby Lane. Uh, I am the person that Ms. Parks is referring to with regards to the dogs. Uh, we did have two different hearings, one at the magistrate court and one at the Court of Common Pleas, and it was a negotiation. We paid a nominal fee for most of the citations. And most of them occurred in two thousand twenty-four, which is, was prior to us doing a reinforcement of fencing. We did not have an incident for a long time, up until recently. And we did a third re-fortification. And we also built a six-foot privacy fence in the front of our deck. Uh, the reference that Ms. Parks is referring to is to the number of dogs. We don't have these dogs on our property again. Um, typically breeders, or I should say, and a, a good number of breeders, um, enter into co-ownership agreements with, uh, uh, homes that these puppies or dogs go to. They are not, they do not stay on our property. So the numbers that Ms. Parks is quoting are not the number of dogs on our property, and we do this because we like to maintain, um, control over the showing of these animals and to make sure that they don't wind up, uh, somewhere where they're not supposed to. Or if there's a situation where there's a death in the family, or divorce, or for whatever reason, they can't keep the dogs, we will get, uh, Airdale Rescue involved. The dogs do not come back to our property. And we work with them to re-home the dogs, and they do find wonderful homes for these animals. So, uh, please stop saying that we have so many dogs, because we don't. Um, I think the erection of the privacy fence in the front was a sacrifice for us, because we have a beautiful view in the front. But the one plus is that Ms. Parks's four security cameras do not peer into our windows, as she has commented, and asked what we were doing up at four thirty in the morning. Well, we make a stew for them every morning. We give them the best ingredients that we can give them, and we give them wonderful care.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, hi, I'm Elizabeth Cachano. I'm at one ninety-eight Staden, a taxpayer in Pocono Township. Um, I live on Staden Road, and across the street from my house, there's a survey team that's been there for maybe two or three days now. Um, I'm just chatty, so I'm always curious, so I just went up to one of them this morning, actually, and asked what their purpose was, what were they surveying? And one guy got mad at the other guy, because he said to me, it's for a pumping station. Um, so I leave that up to my husband to explain what that's all about, but I think it's a sewage pumping station for the warehouse.
That would be correct.
And I just wondered if that's what it is, and, um, am I going to see it? I, I'm not angry about it. I just want to know where it's going to be, and am I going to smell it? Is there going to be, what, is it right on the road? Is it back in the woods? I'm just curious if somebody could let me know.
Patrick, you can probably explain where it is, but it was, it is a pumping station.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, it's out closer to the road, um, for access by, um, the operators in the township.
Do you know how much of the land they're clear to actually, is it a big facility?
No, it's small. Um, I don't have the plans in front of me, and I can't recall, but it's, it's a small pumping station.
Are the tanks like underground? Are they above the ground?
Tanks are in the ground.
They're in the ground, so it's like a gas station with like a pump on top? Is that sort of thing?
No, it'll be a little, um, hut with, with pumps that are in the ground to pump to a forest main.
And then, is it sewage? Is that what's in there?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So that's what it is then. Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
I'd say if you look at the pumping stations right near American Candle, it's similar to that, but a little bit smaller.
American Candle is where my, I buy my Pandora, down there?
To the far left.
To the far left of it?
Far left in that parking lot. If you look all the way over by the, by the woods line there, there's a small station there. That station is larger than the station that's being proposed for.
This, this is a low-flow pumping station too, so you can.
Will there be a lot of trucks going in and out, or how does, what is it?
No, no, no. This is connected with our sanitary sewer system.
So it just goes there and then it, how it goes.
It's comfortable.
Yeah, and if you walk right up to that pump station, you won't, you won't smell anything at all. Everything is internal underground.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks, Patrick.
Thanks, Betsy. Anyone else in the audience? Is there anybody online that wants to make a public comment? Okay, moving on. Is anyone here from Tannersville Point Apartments, waivers, presentations?
Up right there, that's better. Yep. Thank you.
Um, good evening. Alan Fornewalk from Keystone Consulting Engineers. Uh, this is for the Tannersville Point Apartments. So I think the first thing on the agenda is the, the waivers. Do you want me to go through the waivers, or?
Everyone should have a packet in front of their desk, uh, for the waivers in Keystone, ACE.
First, for there, for everybody's information, can you explain where this is located, you know, approximately? So everybody in the audience understands what you're talking about.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. Uh, so Warner Road, um, is directly across the street. Uh, Old Mill ties in directly across the street. Uh, this is an apartment, um, complex, uh, two hundred and eighty apartments in six buildings. So basically, it's, uh, it, it would be the fourth leg of the intersection with Old Mill and Warner. Um, fed by, uh, public water and sewer with a, um, an on-lot, uh, onsite public sewer pumping station, similar to what was just discussed, uh, to serve this, this development. Um, basically, the, the waivers that are, are listed, um, you know, are for this development. Um, it has all the, the parking, uh, throughout. It also has a community center, uh, and on, onsite pool, uh, for recreation, and also, uh, some, uh, we'll call it passive recreation area, um, that, uh, you know, you could walk your dog, or have a picnic, or, or just hang out outside and enjoy the scenery. So that's, I think, the overall gist of the, the development.
So, uh, or there are eleven waivers and, uh, one deferral that they are requesting tonight. And, uh, you'll see John's, uh, comment letter, uh, right past the agenda. Um, it's a pretty lengthy letter. Almost a hundred and seventy comments. Uh, most have been, uh, satisfied, so, um, Mr. Fornewalk, if you just want to take over and start with waiver one.
Do it waiver by waiver?
Yes, we have to.
Okay.
Sure. Okay, so the, the first waiver, uh, was, uh, just, uh, procedure for preliminary final plan. Uh, we pro, we have processed it uh, to this point as a preliminary slash final plan, um, whereas the ordinance requires, uh, separate preliminary and final.
And do you agree with this?
Is that great, John?
Yeah.
I think we always put them together.
No, we've already done them separately.
The, the ordinance says that you can put your commercial together, preliminary slash final. It's silent on a residential development, but we have approved this waiver in the past, as long as they have addressed all the final plan requirements in the, in the ordinance, and in this case, they have. So I would support this waiver.
That's number one. Correct, John Saldo, three ninety dash seventeen dot B dot one?
Yes.
See. So make a motion to approve, um, just this, approve Saldo, three ninety dash seventeen dot B dot bracket one preliminary final plan submission procedure. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian, discussion?
So, is this something? If Brian just said, wh, why are they different, commercial and residential, and is this something that we need to address in our overall addressing? Like, what, what is the purpose for that?
I think the purpose actually aids the developer if they want to just submit a preliminary plan and start construction off of that. I think the fact that you have, in this particular case and other cases, uh, if a developer asks for preliminary slash final, you've got far more information in front of you to evaluate whether we should change it when we change, make ordinances change. I, I don't think it'd be a bad idea to include this option for residential as well. We already do it for commercial. I think it's a good option for residential as well.
And that it, it wouldn't raise the level of a, of a waiver at that point.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Any comments from the commissioners? No, I'm sorry.
No, that, I was.
You're okay?
I was just thinking, John, yeah.
Anyone else? Before we vote, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to make a comment regarding this matter? I can't see anybody behind the plan, so you're gonna have to stand up and read. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any names?
What's your theory?
Okay, the, the second one has to do with the, the driveway width. Um, the access driveway shall be permitted to only be twenty-four feet in width and shall not, uh, no less than twenty-four and shall not be any more than thirty-six feet in width. Uh, basically, our design of the, the driveway entrance, um, is really designed off of the vehicular turning movements coming in. And it just so happens that at that right-of-way line, we're at forty and a quarter feet, forty point two five feet, which exceeds the thirty-six foot maximum.
So it's actually wider than what our ordinance calls for, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I see that you have, that's out of order, what you have in the resolution. Um, show me, I'll, I'll go in the order of the resolution, I'm sorry. Um, the, the second one in the resolution is the plant's, uh, sheet size. As you can see, this is one of the plans. It's thirty by forty-two inches, uh, which exceeds your required plant size.
See that?
Number twelve in our comment letter, Brian.
That's actually number nine.
Yeah.
Nine on the.
We're going by the KCE document. Okay, so the next one we'll be going over is three ninety, uh, forty-eight.
This is, you were on the right one.
The driveway.
The driveway.
Okay, okay. That was, the resolution, they're different order, okay. So if we're, if we're going by my, my waiver request letter, uh, the driveway width, I'm sorry, we're at forty and a quarter at the right-of-way line, and, uh, the maximum permitted is thirty-six by ordinance. So the, the radii.
You have your HLP for that?
Yes.
Do you have an approved, you have an approved HLP for that?
So, uh, it's not approved yet, but we've gone back and forth with PennDOT about five times, and there's just a couple of minor comments that we're working with as an outside agent. Yes.
And this is being dictated by PennDOT's requirements, correct?
Correct. All, all based off the vehicular turning movements.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve Saldo, three ninety dash forty-eight dot T dot bracket thirteen bracket B. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Discussion by the commissioners?
Just, there's no other way to get around that, like, moving the driveway?
No, it's.
Because it comes in on an angle. I'm not sure.
Well, it actually, it's difficult to, to see there, but it actually hits the roadway perpendicularly. Uh, so moving the driveway wouldn't have any impact on it. It, it has to do with, you know, when you drive your car, uh, and make a turn, um, that you're not hitting the curb, so that it has a, a nice flank on the sides, uh, for the, for the design vehicle.
So if you're coming west, you're, you're beyond ninety degrees to get in there, so you need, you need more width on the western side.
And you can see where Old Mill Road is right across.
Yeah, you're right. It's ninety. Yeah.
So it, it lines up.
Well, Old Mill is not at ninety, but that's, doesn't have anything to do with our development.
Is that Old Mill right across from there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the center lines line up, and, and our driveway is, is at ninety degrees. Old Mill is not.
So.
I would, I would venture to guess Old Mill's wider than thirty-six feet too.
So if you think that's necessary?
Yeah. But based on the, trying to get a vehicle, especially a fire truck in there, you, you've got to be able to make the turn.
So what do you need for that? So again, maybe in the big plan, we need to change what we, we have in our plan.
Yeah, it's hard to write an ordinance that covers everything. Uh, typically, the thirty-six would be good. I mean, especially if you're in Tannersville on six eleven, you don't want real wide driveways. You'd like to keep them restricted as much as you can.
But a fire truck still has to get in.
Fire truck still has to come in, and in, and in-town situations, sometimes they jump curbs and everything else to do what they have to do. do what they have to do. Out here, we do have the room. PennDOT dictates and I mean, we can look at it when we go through the ordinance, but but it's a state road.
Well, the state's mandating him to do this. The state's telling him.
I'm just trying to understand and fix our rules if they need fixing.
Yeah, it's really a function of the vehicles and the turning movements as opposed to the our alignment is perpendicular to the road.
Anything else from the commissioners? Anybody in the audience have a comment regarding this before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any names? Motion carried. Three ninety dash forty eight, sir, dot T dot bracket fourteen.
Thank you. This one has to do with concrete aprons. Your your ordinance requires a concrete apron. We're proposing asphalt paving as opposed to having a concrete apron just for consistency and being able to have a painted crosswalks that have a higher difference, higher visibility against the the black or the dark asphalt. So we're just asking for a waiver not to have to put a a concrete apron across, which we don't think would really add any benefit.
And again, the concrete apron would be utilized more often in a downtown setting where you've got sidewalk and you're going down across the concrete and back up. We're more in a rural area here. I think the waiver request is appropriate and granting it would be appropriate.
Talking sidewalks now and.
Sidewalk is set up as a deferral for number twelve.
Are you saying concrete is better for sidewalks? This board has been pushing sidewalks, but we're gonna wait that? I don't know. I'm not a sidewalk person, but.
I thought when the owner originally came in to talk about this project, maybe three, four years ago, he agreed to put curves and sidewalks in along Warner Road.
So so this this one has nothing to do with the, you know, the sidewalk will be concrete, the curb will be concrete. This actually has to do with within the limits of the driveway, so curb to curb. So if you were to be walking across, the sidewalk ends at the curb and you're transitioning down the ramp to the asphalt roadway. So your ordinance requires concrete to carry across on the actually the driveway itself, having a ribbon of concrete across the asphalt. So what we're asking for a waiver from isn't on this, isn't anything to do with the curb or the sidewalk. It has to do with the material within the driveway.
But why do you want it? Why? Why are you asking for that? Why do you want? Waste of money.
Why? I haven't run into this one, John, but if we if there was sidewalk on both sides, you can almost make the argument that the driveway apron should be a different should be concrete, in which case I would always say just put asphalt in and stripe it like we do on six eleven, like we do anywhere else. Is that the only time that this applies?
Yeah.
But you don't have sidewalk on both sides, do you?
They're only proposing sidewalk on the eastern side.
So in this case, wouldn't that eliminate that need for that anyway?
Yeah, I mean, I I I did not object to the waiver because I just don't think the concrete is necessary in this location.
And and it's concrete and asphalt expand at different temperatures because one's white and one's black, and it just always breaks up the edges.
You're always you're always gonna have the edges broken up. You're always gonna have weeds growing between the joints. I don't I don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, you're gonna the concrete's gonna spoil because you're gonna salt a driveway and anything that ends in sodium is no good for the concrete.
And and the snowplows are gonna hit the edge of it.
Yeah, it's they're gonna heave differently. So you're gonna hit the edges of the winter. That's that's a silly.
Any other commissioners? Anybody in the audience? We didn't we we didn't make the motion. No, you're you're right. Yeah, you're right. You're right. I'll make a motion to approve section three ninety dash T dot T or forty eight dot T dot bracket fourteen, concrete aprons. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian. Now, is there any discussion with the commissioners? Please.
Asphalt doesn't last as long as concrete. Am I correct? Concrete is more durable. So my question is if the asphalt deteriorates and cracks and it needs to be replaced, are you all gonna be doing that in a timely way? You know, because over time asphalt just doesn't survive the way concrete does. So I'm just wondering what it's gonna look like when it wears down. Will will be responsible for.
So obviously, the property owner is going to be responsible for that maintenance. However, I would assert that there's going to be less maintenance with the asphalt. It's gonna be a lot easier to paint the crosswalks and it's gonna be more visible to have the contrast of a darker pavement material with with the white crosswalk material. Yeah. Yeah, the maintenance, as was mentioned just a moment ago, you know, it's gonna be more maintenance because the the salt's gonna deteriorate it and the snowplow is gonna hit hit the edge. Especially in a big snow plow, a snow plowing event and they need a front end loader or something. It's just it's gonna go across the asphalt being a continual surface better than having a ribbon of concrete.
What just since this is a state road that you're tying into, does PennDOT have a problem with you using asphalt versus cement?
Well, in this case, it wouldn't be in there. They wouldn't like that, but it's it's not in their right of way, so they don't really have any.
But you're all gonna tie into Warner Road, right?
Yeah, we are tying into, but it would only be the apron would just be, you know, back where the crosswalk would be.
Well, it'll be in front of that cement. No?
Asphalt. It would have been it would have been asphalt. Concrete asphalt.
Oh.
Now it'll be asphalt.
Okay, then you are responsible naturally or the?
Yeah, the the property owner is responsible regardless of what the material is.
Anyone else in the audience have a comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Motion carried.
I'm gonna flip over to the grading plan to help illustrate this one a little bit. Number number four is has to do with the the depth of the water in the the stormwater basin. This this plan is a little bit different than a lot of a lot that you've seen, I'm sure. This this project has designed all of the stormwater to be underground. So there isn't going to be any, you know, bowl shaped retention area on the property that would attract any mosquitoes or have a bunch of weeds growing in it or anything. There's going to be an area that's gonna have an underground concrete vault system with with soil on top of it and grass and everything. So it's in in that area. So your ordinance restricts the the water to be five feet, no more than five feet, and we're at nine point three two feet. But again, we're trying to have this water in a box underground. Now, some of that is retained to be released slowly to mitigate the the development, and some of it is going to be retained for up to a week to be sprayed across the vegetation and landscape across the frontage of the property. So that's that's how the stormwater is being managed. But the way your ordinance is set up, it's very restrictive in basin design for stormwater retention and design. So we're we're basically saying that, you know, we don't see that as an issue. There isn't a an issue with a child falling into it or anything. It's completely sealed except for maintenance or any issues.
My concern, and I don't know anything about this, but we're going, we're saying you can have five feet, and now we're saying they want nine feet. That's nine feet of water being dispersed.
The five the five feet.
Still going somewhere.
Well, yeah, but that's not the issue. The issue the issue with the five feet is really and again, this is written for an above bound basin where you've got an earthen berm. And if you get above five feet dam criteria, DEP dam criteria starts to kick in and everything else. I'm not even sure this waiver was required. I think they ask out of an abundance of caution. Because it's underground, you don't have any of those things to worry about. And the height of the, I mean, the volume of the water would be the same whether they only had five feet and made it twice as big an area or nine feet and half the half the area. So it really has no bearing on the amount of water that it's holding and releasing.
I'll make a motion.
Another comment, though. You said you're gonna spray it. What are you gonna do with it in the winter when it's? So you won't be spraying grass in the winter, right?
No, so in in the wintertime, the the pump, there will be a pump situated, you know, on the bottom. And then that'll pump when, you know, three quarters of the year when it's above freezing conditions, that will go out and and spray the spray zones out along the road for all the vegetation and trees and everything out there. In the wintertime, when it's frozen, we can't spray through the spray heads. There will be a diversion pipe that will slowly take that that water and and bypass it downstream. But we do also have a a rain garden area in this in this area that isn't going to rely on a pump or sprayheads or anything that that water will will feed the vegetation in that area. But what would normally be sprayed out along the road, you're right, we can't throw through it. We can't pump it through sprayheads in freezing conditions. So that will be that will be bypassed, but it's only for that part of the year when when it's below freezing.
This is no difference. It's important note. This isn't any different than any other infiltration basin that we've approved or that is approved without a waiver. They don't infiltrate in the winter. There's a bypass in all of those for a high water event or when it's frozen or it doesn't infiltrate for whatever reason. It by it bypasses that goes into the streams.
I'll make a motion to approve three ninety dash fifty dot D bracket four storm water basin depth. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Is there any other commissioner has a comment regarding this? Anybody in the audience have a comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any names? Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. The next one on the list here is the limit of slopes. It talks about the edges of newly created slopes shall be a minimum of five feet from the property line. Actually, that's been through a couple of different iterations. And we have now redesigned it to to avoid avoid that. We had talked about doing some sort of temporary construction easement on the neighboring property and have gotten away from that. So unless you think we should move forward with us, we can we can skip that one. Moving on to the next one, then, connection of the roof leaders. So we're talking about here that there should be a disconnection of the roof leaders. In our case, we have it designed so that it does directly connect to the underground stormwater collection, which avoids the surface flow over sidewalks and driveways and parking areas to avoid the icing in the wintertime. So that one that one's still a request of section three sixty five dash eight Leroy.
I'll make a motion to approve section three sixty five dash eight dot L connections of roof leaders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, discussion?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Somebody else wanna go?
No.
I see this one a lot. Why are we saying they can't be connected when we give this waiver that we can? All the time, seems like. I guess I'm asking you, John.
Okay, well, again, it's it's different criteria. They would a lot of this is being handed down by DEP or is in the MPDS permit requirements. And they like the water to rather than just go from a roof drain, they like it to flow over land if it can. That's not always practical. And I'm not even talking about this project. Some of the times when we grant the waiver, it would be flowing over a parking lot which has oils and everything else that it would carry it that you don't want it to. So in those cases, it's better off to correct to direct the clean water directly into the stormwater area. In this particular case, it's going into directly into the stormwater. That's the type of waiver we've granted before. I, again, for this design, I think it's appropriate. I don't think our ordinance is necessarily incorrect. Like I said, it's you gotta look at every case individually and and make a judgment call.
So there's no grass for this to flow over?
Well, it's gonna be sprayed out of the system into the grass. What is your, what are your roof materials? Is that shingles or metal roofs?
I believe it's mostly rubber roof and shingles for the for the roof. Yeah.
So you're most this is a storm trap or contact system?
Storm storm trap.
And your pump's gonna be on the bottom. You gotta be careful with, ran into this before with the pebbles that are coming off that that roof getting into that pump and then ending up in your heads and then they don't work anymore.
So so in order to help combat that, we do have a sump in in the line of every one of the lines coming in beforehand to to grab that any material that comes in.
Is the pump alarmed? If it stops working, is it alarmed if it stops?
Yeah, that that'll be part of the part of the system like it. It'll be programmed to to spray, you know, mostly at night. And if if something goes wrong, yes, it'll be alarmed.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody in the audience wish to say something? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any names? Motion carried.
Okay, next next waiver is section three sixty five dash thirteen B as in boy. And this has to do with the stormwater calculations. It's not as, you know, appealing to talk about as some of the other physical things. But it just has to do with the the stormwater calculation methodology. And we get into a conflict sometimes with what DEP wants and the county wants and what's the and what the township wants. So the waiver we're asking for is that the stormwater management report to utilize the rainfall values and in NOAA Atlas fourteen for for consistency.
Make a motion to approve section three sixty five dash thirteen dot B stormwater calculations. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian, discussion? Anybody have any comments in the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any names? Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Next next waiver item is section three ninety dash fifty dot C C. This has to do with the stormwater pipe size. Your ordinance states that all stormwater pipe has to be fifteen inches in diameter or larger. And it is all fifteen inches or larger on the plan except for the roof leaders. You know, the roof leaders being fifteen inches just kind of overkill. So we believe that twelve inch diameter pipe, you know, is not going to be prone to clogging for the roof leaders. And it's more than adequate to convey the flow. So we're asking for a waiver to go with twelve inch diameter for the roof leaders.
Make a motion to approve section three ninety dash fifty dot C C pipe size. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, discussion?
John, can you explain?
Yeah. The the reason for the fifteen inch and PennDOT's actually going to eighteen inch, which is what I support for storm sewer systems is primarily for cleansing velocities. When you get debris washed in into your catch basins, et cetera, and you get water flowing through, you want it to flow through at a rate that it cleans your pipes. So that's the reason for limiting the pipe size to a larger diameter. This is a collection system pipe. This is this does not have open drains. It's being fed from the roof. Lots of times, we only see them to be six, eight or ten inches in diameter. And again, it doesn't have a bunch of inlets where leaves and all of that can get into it. So that's the difference. I'm not even sure. I think this waiver was raised out of an abundance of caution. I'm not sure that this particular ordinance section applies to the collection system.
Anything else from the commissioners? Just get to your free inspection call.
Thank you. And then we get on to, uh, the next, uh, section. I have a list of sections three ninety dash twenty-five B four and three ninety dash twenty-nine E four for plan size. Um, your ordinance, uh, tries to keep plans on the smaller side of a maximum size of, uh, twenty-four inches by thirty-six inches. Um, we tried to do the, uh, the plan layouts, uh, for twenty-four by thirty-six and just based on the, the size and geometry of this lot. Um, it was a whole lot of extra sheets with match lines that made it confusing. So we had laid it all out by, uh, thirty, thirty by forty-two inch, which is what this plan sizes. Uh, so we're just, um, asking for a waiver to use the bigger paper size.
I'll make a motion to approve section three ninety dot dash twenty-five dot B bracket four and three ninety dash twenty-nine dot E dot bracket four. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Natasha. Uh, are you gonna provide this on a thumb drive also by any chance the plans?
Yeah, we, we already have to.
It's required.
Okay, we have that. That's anybody else?
Yeah, I mean, is there a reason why we wouldn't accept a bigger plan for our file?
Well, that, that was the reasons, uh, but with everybody filing everything electronically anymore. Uh, actually, I prefer to see everything on one sheet as opposed to having to flip through sheets. And electronic filing sort of eliminates, I mean, it's still a pain to slip, to flip through thirty by forty-two inch sheets, but but, uh, I, I think again, this was the better choice, given all the considerations.
Anybody else? Anybody in the audience? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. The next item, uh, has to do with the, uh, the design truck, um, for turning templates to get through the site. Um, so I have a list of sections three ninety dash twenty-five G one C, three ninety twenty-five G nineteen and three ninety twenty-nine J one C. So the ordinance requires a design vehicle to be used of a WB fifty, which is, uh, basically a, a fifty-foot tractor trailer, um, the trailer being that size. Um, so the, the waiver that we're asking for is to not use that as the design vehicle because it really doesn't apply to this development. Uh, but rather use the design vehicles of, uh, an SU thirty, which is a, a thirty-foot box truck. You know, that might make deliveries for a couch or, you know, a- anything that somebody might want for their, uh, you know, maybe a, a washer or dryer or who knows what might be coming in in the future for deliveries. Um, and also of course, the, uh, the township ladder fire truck. Um, so those, those are the two, uh, largest vehicles. They, they have different properties, but those are the two largest vehicles that we believe should be the design vehicle, given this particular development. And, um, we have demonstrated that they work throughout this site and that there wouldn't be any need for a, a big tractor trailer in here.
And just for the board, the fire chief has signed off on this plan.
So my question is, we just had a bigger driveway so the trucks could turn and now you're saying we're not gonna have trucks. So isn't that a contradiction?
Oh, I, I still think you need the driveway to accommodate the turning movements of even those vehicles. So that, you know, you gotta remember that those vehicles have to turn into that driveway. Uh, when there's cars already stacked up trying to get out. So you really only have half the width of the driveway to make that maneuver.
Uh, well, moving vans are, are tr- tractor trailers. That's if I'm gonna move, I get higher tractor trailer. With all my furniture, one shot.
I mean, for the, uh, you know, the, the request for the waiver of the, the geometry of the entrance of the driveway is not based on a WB fifty. It's based on what we were talking about of the fire truck and the, and the thirty-foot box truck.
Saying you have tractor trailer for me to move in, I'm not gonna be able to get through there.
Well, and, and for the, for the most part, I believe when you hire a moving company, you know, they'll, they'll understand your situation of where you are and everything and know whether they can use a, a full tractor trailer and put multiple customers on it or not.
Coming from a different state, I'm using one shot, not multiple.
How big are these apartments?
Uh, there's nothing bigger than a two-bedroom.
You don't wanna run two or three apartments. Uh, I'm gonna make a motion to approve section three ninety dash twenty-five dot G dot bracket one bracket C. Three ninety dash twenty-five dot G dot bracket nineteen and three ninety dash twenty-nine dot J dot bracket one and bracket C. Is there a second? Second by Mike. Think we discussed it. Are there any other questions from the commissioners? Anybody in the audience wish to make a comment regarding this? All in favor? You know, but sorry, maybe you need to sit over here, Mr. Kepler, so I can see him. Cause I don't, I don't look over. My peripheral vision is getting old.
Uh, Charles Kepler, resident. Um, I work in freight. I, I'd just like to note that residential, um, deliveries do occur with a fifty-three foot box or, you know, trailers, um, on a pretty regular basis. I know I've received, uh, freight deliveries to my house, um, in a fifty-three foot trailer with a lift gate. Um, so it does happen. It's not completely unheard of. So that's just something for the commissioners to consider. Um, I don't know how frequent it would be to an apartment, but, um, I would definitely take that into account. Um, I wouldn't rule it out because the last thing these people want would to be, uh, would be for a fifty-three foot box truck to gets, or truck to get stuck in their, uh, to get stuck in their parking lot. Thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to the next one, uh, section, section three ninety dash fifty, uh, D three. It's three nine, three ninety fifty D three. Has to do with the stormwater basin geometry. Um, has to do with, uh, you know, how a storm, uh, storm detention facility would be, uh, geometrically designed with the side slopes and geometry. Um, again, uh, we were asking for a waiver probably out of an abundance of, of, uh, you know, caution on this one. Um, but we had looked at it as the ordinance was, you know, laid out for the way everything used to be done as far as having it be above ground. Again, as I pointed out, it's all, uh, below ground in a concrete box.
Make a motion to approve section three ninety dash fifty dot D bracket three storm, stormwater basin geometry. Is there a second? Second by Mike. Just, uh, John, my question would be, is you, you agree with this?
Yes.
Is it necessary? We already approved it to be.
I don't think, uh, like, is, I don't, I, I don't think the waiver is necessary, but they, they were asking for it. I don't think it hurts you to grant it.
Covers their bases.
Yeah.
So where these are going underground, you're not reducing slopes, right? Digging them out to put them underground?
Uh, you're, 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 you're gonna excavate a hole. You're gonna drop the box in and then you're gonna close it all back in.
Bottom's flat. It's got, it'll have concrete for it. Either they're gonna be ones that we used before, don't have a bottom, you pour, you pour bottom, so, so they're flat.
I mean, the, the first sentence says, uh, the side slopes invasion shape shall conform to the natural topography. Well, that's not applicable in this case. It's, it's a swimming thing on the whole.
Anybody else? Anybody in the audience? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. I think there's, there's one more which, uh, has been hinted at before talking about the sidewalks. So the ordinance, uh, section three ninety dash forty-eight A A has to do with the frontage sidewalks, which requires, uh, sidewalk across the whole frontage. So, um, as you'll see on the bottom of the plan here, Interstate I eighty is, uh, right along this property. Um, Warner Road goes over it on a bridge. Uh, so basically, um, and the, the way the topography is there, there's a guide rail, uh, that connects to the bridge. There just really isn't, I mean, we'd be happy to build a sidewalk wherever we can, but there just really isn't any practical way to have a sidewalk go anywhere useful. Um, as you go to I eighty, unless we're gonna go down to I eighty and walk along there, which wouldn't be legal. So, um, so we're providing, um, a sidewalk between our driveway down to the property line this way to the east.
Point that out, please.
Yes.
Okay. And that's on Warner Road, correct?
We have sidewalks on both sides of our driveway, so that's connected, but we're not proposing to go towards I eighty because we would get behind the guide rail and have no useful place to put the, to have the sidewalk go. Um, so as, as was discussed in the planning commission, we had asked for a waiver, but it kinda turned into a deferral. Um, if at some point in the future, you know, it would make sense to put a sidewalk that way. You know, it was a deferral. Now that's being asked for. Um, so the township could require that in the future. Um, but at this point, there's just, again, no useful, um, end destination for that.
There, there isn't today. I have to agree with your statement, but, uh, you never know what's gonna happen down the road. And I believe when the owner of this property got up to speak to us many years ago, he agreed that there'd be sidewalks on both sides of that.
Mister President, if I could add to that though, this, this, there are sidewalks going along the whole side of the property. It's just up to the bridge. There would not be any sidewalks.
But this is saying.
I don't think sidewalks are necessary at all. I don't think he needs to put any in unless he wants them in. You're in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah.
You're not going anywhere.
Today you're not. Tomorrow you don't know what's gonna happen.
Well, and he might not be there tomorrow. So.
If there're gonna be any public transportation or bus stops anywhere in the front of the property?
So, um, as far as the school, school bus traffic goes, we have reached out to the school district and haven't had any meaningful reach back as far as, you know, where they would go. But typically, the school districts do not wanna drive on private lands. Um, so, yeah, so the stop will be in the, in the front there. So there's, again, there's sidewalks on both sides of the driveway, uh, going out. There, there's a crosswalk across from one side to the other and there's that sidewalk on this side. Uh, so there's, there's plenty of places for, you know, the, the kids to, to wait in a safe location.
Yeah, I mean, the sidewalk go from driveway to the emergency, uh, access up at the top.
I'll make a motion to waive section three ninety dash forty-eight A A. And if you want sidewalks, we put them in.
Second, well, if I could just have clarification, is that for all the sidewalks or the deferral they're asking for in the left side of their main entrance?
Should have enough for a bus stop.
For the school bus.
For the school bus.
For the school bus.
Yeah.
So just deferring the left side.
But I don't think this, 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 this is not specific enough, is it? This is, this is broad. It'll eliminate the sidewalks totally on the front.
It's, it's, it's the west side.
This is just the west side. It's a deferral. It's not a, it wasn't. Ellen's asking to defer the whole section. I'm, I'm sorry, to waive the whole section.
The motion that presented was, the motion is presented was to waive that requirement, not to defer.
Right.
I'll second it for discussion. Um, I think we need to leave some for, to keep the kids out of the, out of their uh, driveway and the road.
That's fine. And whatever would be necessary, with that exception, I'll amend my motion to, um, to waive it with the exception of enough area for a proper bus stop.
How much? So what's that requirement? Cause shouldn't you wait to hear back from the school district to find out where they would think of that stop? With, with two hundred and eighty apartments, there might be an opportunity for public transportation and a bus stop to come to that area as well. So instead of putting a limit on it, I mean, you can do it everyone. It's your emotion. I'm just saying it. I personally feel it should be just open for a minute to find out what the public entity said. That's just me.
Just so you're aware, how many apartments are we putting in here? Two hundred and eighty. There'll be people that'll be walking out on Warner Road to go maybe nowhere, just for a walk. And not only that, we have, unfortunately, we have a warehouse.
Sorry, Mike.
We have a warehouse going in on the other side of Interstate eighty, I believe, which will be putting sidewalks in on the frontage of Warner Road. So and with the expansion of I eighty that I'm hearing about, the bridges will be replaced and Pendot might be putting sidewalks in. So don't, don't again, it's just my opinion.
Well, if it makes it any easier for, you know, to try to focus on this, um, you know, we don't have a problem putting the sidewalk on the, on the east side. You know, down, down to the emergency, uh, access or the, the property line.
You, you want, you want relief from putting sidewalks up here?
Correct.
Deferral.
Yeah, just a.
They want a deferral. That if, if there's reason for it later, the township can require.
For the west side, but they're planning on putting it out on the east side and that's the way it was described.
Yes.
Yeah.
Get one here. This one is what they're asking for us to waive.
That goes up to the guardrail.
Yeah. Well, here's A, here's the bridge over A.
Right.
Is that all curb then too, all the way up to, uh, or the length of the sidewalk or no?
No, Pendas, Pendas not overly favorable of curb, so it's just on the ra- at the, the radii and then it stops.
So I'll rescind my original motion if you'll take back your second.
I will.
And I'll re-motion to, um, motion to defer the Westerly sidewalk.
I think, excuse me, but all you have to do is approve the section three ninety dash forty-eight, right? Just to prove that.
But didn't we already make the motion to open the discussion?
Well.
Which was leaving that, I mean, to defer again. Oh, no.
Now that we know exactly what they're planning.
I had a motion on the table, so we were discussing. Yeah. We rescinded that motion. I was gonna make another. So I'll make a motion to defer section three ninety dash forty-eight dot A A.
As it relates to
The western.
The west side from the
Drive.
Heteroy way up toward I eighty.
Correct.
Okay. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody in the audience wish to say? Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to say that I am really excited that you all wanna put sidewalks where sidewalks can be. I'm the, um, grandmother of a child on the spectrum who understands stay on the sidewalk, don't walk in the road. So if there're gonna be children in those apartments, I think sidewalks are important. Um, also, as a state representative, I talk to people often and they say we need more sidewalks, right? We're walking on the road. We have no protection from anything. Um, it's, it's more common than you would think, a question that I get asked. And especially in Pocono Township, you really have to downtown, right? Not like Stroudsburg. So you're creating access for people with sidewalks. And I just wanna say, I applaud the fact that you want to build sidewalks and we wanna make it feel more community where people walk and feel like they're in a community.
Thank you very much, Representative Madden. Thank you.
My concern with that is it's a short section. I don't know. Looking at it, that's what, a sixty scale drawl? So that's probably five hundred feet or, or fifty feet of sidewalk we're gonna put in and then it stops. So we're encouraging you to walk that sidewalk and then it stops and we're still over, well, over half a mile anyway to, to six eleven.
But you can't put a sidewalk there because there's once you're out and you get them trucked, right? It's not like.
I'm not sure we can, if we can make the developer put in a half a mile sidewalk to connect to six eleven.
But I, I think what you're talking about where we were gonna defer.
Right? And, and but everybody builds and put sidewalks, then all of a sudden we have sidewalk.
With the trails that are proposed, uh, with this, people would be able to walk contiguous loop around as well.
The trails.
Yeah, I mean, I, in my mind, you know, we could, uh, we could discuss whether we wanna go fifty feet, a hundred. Yeah, I mean, in my mind, you know, we could, uh, we could discuss whether we wanna go fifty feet, a hundred feet, a hundred fifty feet, something like that for. To make sure we have enough room to have a part, a bus park there and whatnot, but, but this does allow people to walk down to the emergency, emergency driveway and walk up around the gate. Um, so, you know, we already have it on the plan, you know.
So Leo, is the motion that was mentioned by, um. Ellen and seconded by Brian, is, does that give the township the right in the future if we want them to put sidewalks into the west side of that driveway? They would have to do that.
Yes, because it's only a deferral. That's correct.
Anybody in the audience have any comments regarding this matter? Any further comments from the commissioners? All in favor?
Alright.
By Penny Naves, motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
I just had another question on this, and it's not part of those waivers, but, um, are they paying in lieu fees? Or are they setting aside open space?
See, and Louv has already been, uh, settled in past motions, um, from their first submission. Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Well, did the plan change that they're disturbing more acreage?
No, it had, it actually, it's less. So I'd have to pull up the, the amount of what they are.
Well, maybe we need to recalculate that and owe them a refund. If it's based on acreage disturbed, Leo, is that accurate? They changed their plan?
In, in this, it wouldn't have been. In residential, it's based on.
Units.
Units.
So depending if they change their units, right? If they scaled it down, you might have changed your.
But, you know, I don't know what the board did in two thousand and eighteen or how they based it then.
In two thousand and eighteen, if I recall, this was a hotel site, correct?
Yeah.
Is this the hotel site? No, I'm sorry.
This has always been residential.
Always been residential? I believe, I don't, don't quote me, I don't have it in front of me, but there was a conversation. And if I recall correctly, because there were some passive recreation areas. That were being designed and developed for use by the apartment, uh, dwellers. Uh, there was a negotiation on the total amount of the fee, but I don't have that number in front of me. So there was a, if I recall correctly, there was a conversation. And involved the per unit, there was a question raised as to whether or not apartments are residential dwellings or commercial. Cause that would affect the calculation. Uh, there is some ambiguity in our existing ordinances that would allow that conversation to occur. Then there was talk about the addition or, or the creation of passive recreation, walking. Areas for the, uh, apartment dwellers, uh, and then there was a number that was agreed to, but I don't recall the number.
I would, I would just ask that we revisit that, Jared, if we could pull that out, just to make sure that we didn't get cheated or you didn't get cheated. Plans changed.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Can you take your, uh, place, your?
Yeah, we, I, I didn't know whether we're gonna be talking about the plan separately, right? Do you want me to, I'll just take it down.
They'll be on here for resolution next.
We're gonna talk about the plan. We're just, it's a motion to, to grant, to approve the resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty three, right? Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty three, granting conditional approval of the Tannanville Point Apartment L D P. Thirteen fifty eight, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike.
Rich, before we, before we, uh, comment and vote, I would note for the board that in resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty three on the second page. There was a waiver request, uh, section two twenty dash eight point C, which was withdrawn by the applicant. So that would be stricken from this resolution. And I would also note that condition number six. Has to do with in lieu of fees, so it should be noted that that is to be inserted in this resolution.
If you'll amend your motion.
Yes.
The amendments. In two seconds then.
Yes.
You'll accept that?
I will.
So this, isn't this conditional final?
Yes.
Is it worded that way on the amendment, on the, uh, resolution?
Can granting conditional approval. No, it's not final, but.
This is preliminary final.
So they submitted a preliminary final plan, so that's what it's referring to.
So preliminary final.
Is there anybody further, is there any further discussion of the board?
Leo.
Yes.
Does that number have to be filled in, that we're voting on?
You, you can make it conditioned upon the insertion of the number if you wanna move it along tonight. If not, they'll come back in three weeks. Because we have an extra Monday this month, but that's up to the board.
Well, they, we have to agree on it. So if you don't say what it is, we, we haven't agreed on it.
We know what it is, Chair?
That would be in manager Ager's email at that point, so I'll have to go dig and check the notes too. But I believe the in lieu fee was somewhere around a hundred and eighteen thousand.
Does he, does, do you have any idea what the, uh, in lieu fees were at the time? It is. I'm just confused.
I was thinking about more. And then, then I'm confused.
Or they put a couple.
So they haven't paid.
But it was agreed to in two thousand.
What, what, what is the timeframe on this as far as action by the board? We'll get past this sick up in a hurry here.
Unfortunately, I don't have that exact number, uh, right here at the moment.
We're checking the timeframe for action by the board. If we have to, we can push it off to the, uh, first meeting in October.
Is there any way we could do everything except for that and then just vote on that in October or no?
Let's see, let's see what our timeframes are.
Benchmark receives, uh, it's ten thirty, Leo.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I saw that. I just noticed that also. So if you'd like and you want that number to be completed and inserted, we could do some research. And have you come back on the first meeting in October, at which point in time the board will be prepared to take complete action?
Okay.
We're not trying to drag you back. You won't have to do your waivers again. Um, it'll just be passage of the resolution.
Okay.
Can we just look up the minutes? I think it should have happened in March of twenty three.
No, it was initially set for preliminary final back in twenty nineteen.
So.
So this, this dates back.
So the owner, unfortunately, I wasn't involved in the project in two thousand and eighteen, so my memory's not that good and, uh, something I wasn't involved in. But the owner, the owner is thinking it was somewhere around a hundred and eighteen thousand, uh, which is what you guys were talking about for the credit of having the on, onsite facilities.
If you wanna take a five-minute recess, I can, I can check the shared drive and see if I can find it quickly.
Yeah, that's fine. Do it that way, you don't have to.
That, that works. Thank you.
Okay, so I think the question was for the open space funds in lieu of funds for Tanner's little point, we found the number that was agreed upon back in 2018.
So the number that was agreed upon with land development plan thirteen seventy-one was one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. The problem is, is that plan had been modified and changed, so that is an old land development number, so we would have to go through this tonight and have the board decide on a number. Yeah. Well, I mean, and the the plan has changed, the amount of buildings have changed, the disturbance has changed. And the amount of rooms have changed as well, so it I would just be, the the board would have to bring everything back up. Just, you know, make a number tonight and put that into the resolution.
Well, our ordinance Leo is fourteen hundred per unit, right? But minus whatever open space area they already have, do we know what that number is?
What's?
Or does that matter? Is that even calculated when it's units? And then, right, the other one was acreage and one was units and then we've done all kinds of things.
But there's two calculate, you're right with everything you just said, Ellen, there's two calculations, one is per unit. And one is for disturbed acres, the for disturbed acres is for a commercial enterprise. It's been argued that this is a commercial enterprise. Uh, I know you've compromised between the two numbers in the past. I don't know how you arrived at a number. I just know that it was higher than the disturbed acres and less than the unit cost.
So by by disturb acres, this will be twenty-five thousand two hundred by two hundred and eighty rooms, it'd be three hundred ninety-two thousand.
Yeah, I have slightly different number, I've got the three ninety-two for the uh, units, I've got twenty-nine eight oh six for the disturbed acres.
Okay, that I thought he had said eighteen disturbed acres.
Uh, I've got twenty-one point two nine.
That that was off my memory.
So the purpose of this in lieu of fee, let's go back to the MPC, is for residential subdivisions. That do not set aside open space for their own people necessarily to use our parks and to either. Set aside space for their people or to contribute to our parks so their people can use our parks. So that's what this is, a residential, people are going to use our parks with this development, unlike. The rehab or MCTA, right, their people aren't using our parks. So where do we go from here? Because that's the intent of this, right?
Is the developer willing to stand with his agreement from back in twenty eighteen at one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars or? You'll stand with it? Thank you very much. So Leo, would you craft the correct?
Rich, we have to vote on this.
We are, well, I'm gonna, if you'll give me a minute, I'm just gonna give you a minute, I'm gonna ask Leo to craft the motion, the resolution, so it's all said and done, and then we will vote on it.
We have to fix this.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
We have to fix this.
Not the first word to say, not the first word to say that.
It feels like we throw darts at the wall.
And this.
I know what we, I know what we paid.
Can you just, I just want to do that math backwards because I want to.
But we don't know, Ellen, we don't know what the disturbed acreage was, you know, this happened in two thousand eighteen, in two thousand eighteen. It started with a sketch plan in twenty seventeen. And how many, and how many rooms?
Please craft the motion for this and we'll vote on it, or or we'll see where it goes. Uh, the board should annotate a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-five dash thirty-three. With the following amendments to the resolution that is contained in your paperwork for this evening. The first is to delete the waiver request on the second page, about three quarters of the way down, the waiver request was was for section two two zero dash eight. Point C. And to insert into paragraph numbered six, the sum of one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Representing the fee in lieu of open space that was that has been agreed to by the developer.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, discussion?
Yes, that's breaks out the one hundred and eighteen for two hundred and eighty units is four hundred and twenty-one dollars a unit. Uh, that's a lot of people, two hundred and eighty units, time, just say times two, it's five hundred people using our park, right?
But. What did we do to the other two?
I don't know.
I I can, I can tell you one of them. It's the same number you just came up with, that's what, that's what.
What do we do for that?
That's ours.
Ridge, the ridge.
The ridge.
Well, the ridge is different because.
And we're setting aside a hell of a lot of acreage. This is what we did for. Now, you have, did I hear Jared say you have?
We have a community center.
Right.
Uh, and a pool and and walking area and and sidewalks. So there are amenities, um, you know, that quite frankly, you know, if somebody wants to have a gathering, you know, probably just meet at the community center and as opposed to, you know, renting out one of your park spaces.
You do? Yeah, so I don't have a problem with it, I mean, anything, maybe it's too much.
Jim, I'm I'm sorry, there's also a gym within the community center.
We need to.
Yeah. But because I think this is more than fair.
Any further discussion? I I made, or Leo, I forwarded Leo's motion, Michael uh, seconded. And before we vote, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to make a comment regarding this resolution? You have to give up to the podium, you have one minute, sir.
The way you have it now, each unit is worth fourteen hundred dollars to the community, right, for the parks, the used.
For evidence.
Okay, so that's over three hundred thousand dollars and you're giving them for a hundred and eighteen thousand?
But technically, we should take off the cost of the pool, the cost of the sidewalks, the cost of the paths all the way around it, that's their amenities. That they're putting in, so it might end up going down to zero. Looking at past practice, um. Brookstead, the ridge. Uh, was not done to calculation, it was done on a settlement uh, based off of what they were providing, whether that was extra land, trails. Right. Community center, whatever.
The the ridge set aside enough open space to pay no in lieu of fees, theirs was a donation, very generous limit that. Um, they shouldn't have had to pay anything, so.
Yes, it's still a settlement, though. How many acres is your site total? Alan, how many acres is your site total? It's eighteen disturb, or twenty-one disturb.
It's it's about twenty-six acres.
So there's five acres roughly, plus all of the amenities that they're providing.
Yeah, we have block me trails.
Yeah.
Two, eighty center.
Right, full, the pool, yeah.
I mean, our people technically don't have to hit there.
Right.
Right.
In the previous one, it was up and there was no twelve house, no.
Right.
We figured it's about one point one million art costs right now to build those things. Not an exact number, but that's what we've come up with, it's.
Yeah. So there, there's the ridge.
Twelve house that has.
And there was Anthony.
All these, and this.
For units.
It's.
And neither one of these have amenities. Right.
And there, you know, where kids, you know, you can look weights, you have the bicycles, you have.
I got it, yep. Brookstead was four hundred a unit. Brookstead, which was Brookstead. And. And his other one was four eighty a unit. Uh, Crinver, and I don't have that calculation. So the new one that's. Spirit of Swiftwater, you're right.
We need to get this.
We just need to get it right, but I I don't have a problem with a hundred and eighteen.
Well, now it sounds.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Motion carried. Thank you very much. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, moving on to a consent agenda, make a motion to approve a consent agenda of the following items, old business consisting of the minutes of the September second, twenty twenty-five regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Financial transactions through September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five is presented, including ratification of expenditures in the amount of five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. For the following accounts, general fund, tour operations, gross payroll, capital reserve, construction fund tran, construction fund transfers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, discussion?
Yeah, um, we're missing two sets of minutes. We have no minutes, the last meeting or the meeting before that was corrected.
I think we agree that we would uh, put the amendments in that you talked about uh, at the last meeting.
That we need to approve the minutes from the last meeting, they're not here.
They were approved, oh, the last, oh, the last meeting.
They they were approved pending those amendments.
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
I didn't see him.
Right after the thing that we just finished.
My apologies, there is. But, um. The minutes from the other meeting were to be corrected and I.
And, and they were, they were corrected and approved at the same time.
On the website, so I can't see them. But, but the minutes, was that in your motion? Cause I didn't see it.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, wasn't it, okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Motion carried.
And the minutes for the eighteenth are on the website.
Uh, under new business, under personnel, I'll make a motion to approve a raise for Regina Suwic of four percent. For eight sixteen twenty twenty five, is there a second? Second by Mike, discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to comment regarding this matter?
I know we discussed this, but is this what the end result was?
Yes. It was.
And is this gonna be included? Already for next year or next year we start all over again?
I guess that depends on the budget. All in favor? Any nays?
Nay.
Motion carried. Uh, under my report, I'll make a motion to accept the executive for the civil service bylaws. Rules and regulations as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian, discussion? Any discussion in the audience? All in favor? Aye, any nays? Motion carried. I'll make a motion to waive the Clear Run Intermediate School PMSD Pavilion fees for ten nine, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to make a comment regarding this matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carried. I'll make a motion to proceed with the dangerous structure inspection for parcel twelve dot eight dot one dot eighty five, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Natasha. Um, this, this particular, it's a garage. Uh, not as old, overgrown with uh trees, grass, it says you go up Fish Hill Road on the right-hand side. Um, it sort of looks like it's falling over, but I, of course, I'm not the uh person to make that. Decision, so the motion really is to have it inspected by uh, by Paul. Anybody else?
You're saying it's on Fish Hill?
It's right before you like head up Fish Hill, it's right across. From um, the um.
Right past the Airbnb.
Yeah, exactly, right past the new Airbnb that was just remodeled a few years ago. You can't, if you go too fast, you're not gonna see it.
It, it's an old two-car garage.
Before we vote, anybody in the audience have a concern with this matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any nays? Motion carried. I'll make a motion to deny Summit Road Solar Array, Blue Wave Solar LDP fourteen thirty nine due to lack of response and the comment. Letter from zoning and the township engineer, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian.
Rich, if I, if I might, Rich, uh, on this matter. Um, this matter was, uh, the, the denial of the plan was recommended at the planning commission meeting which occurred. Uh, last Monday. Uh, in speaking with Lisa who was there. Uh, we'd like the opportunity to prepare an appropriate resolution, typically that is two meetings out. Um. I will. Tell the public and, and the board. That on Ja- on July twenty nine, twenty twenty five, uh zoning issued its opinion. That this proposed solar array use uh. Does not, what is not a use permitted in the R one district. The uh. Landowner uh had an opportunity thirty days to appeal that determination, it was not appealed, so it is a firm determination as we sit here today. Uh, on July fif- I'm so, sorry, September fifteenth. Um. If the board takes action, you're gonna see this again at our next meeting to adopt a formal resolution, we wanted to take care. In the preparation of that resolution, as the engineer's letter. Contains. A hundred and fifty-four comments that have been unaddressed and we wanted to include all of those comments um in the resolution. So.
This is the first step, this is appropriate?
Or no? Uh, i- i- I mean, we, we typically deny or grant. Development request by resolution. And it's the township procedure to do that the second meeting after the planning commission.
Okay.
So, you know, they, they can't go anywhere because they haven't appealed the zoning. And we wanna sort of belt and suspender the situation by including uh the comments in the. Engineers review letter of July ten that went un- um, unresponded to. Um, so as a result of that. If the board does take a- action tonight, recognize that we'll be taking action again in three weeks. So that we can uh do it formally by way of resolution, but no harm, no foul if we vote on this and it's affirmed. No, no harm, no foul, really. Other than it's not typical township protocol.
But if, if we did nothing, is there a chance that it's a deemed? Approval?
What is the deadline for action, Jared? I don't think so. That's Swiftwater. Summit Solar Array. Looks like an extension, review period expires. December sixth, twenty twenty five. Last planning commission meeting action would be eleven ten, twenty twenty five. With the last Board of Commissioners action. Needing to be taken on December first, twenty twenty five.
I'd rather be safe with which.
Yeah.
You're saying.
Yeah. Is there any further discussion from the board? Any discussion from the audience regarding this matter, the motion? Deny. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carried. Uh, Ms. Leep?
I'm looking tonight, thank you.
Ms. Canant?
Yes. Anything, the solar field, John?
Uh, nothing, other than I did get a little bit of an education which I'll pass along, I did raise this question about why we're not seeing green out there. Uh, we raised that at the last site meeting and uh, like, um. Conservation District was there too and part of the discussion, it's the type of grass mix that they're using. You're seeing brown, but it is grass, it's winter grass and it is brown this time of year. But it is there, it is established, it may turn a little bit greener. In the winter, or it may not, depending upon conditions, but. Uh, a lot of the area that if you're looking at it in a distance, it may appear brown, but it is established. Uh, they're continuing to work, uh. As they put up panels, they're coming right behind and putting in their permanent. Uh, seating. And grass behind it, so everything appears to be going. According to plan and how it should.
So they're planting what um Penn Future. Sued them for and they agreed to in VWA?
Yep.
So it was winter grass that they asked for?
Meadow mix.
I. I can't really say, but I thought, I thought everything was revised to address that.
Can, can we find out for sure if they're?
They, they'd have to be submitting the seat tags to Conservation District.
I'll find out.
I have a board meeting there on Thursday, I could ask if we have the seat tag. If, if this board wants.
Sure. Thank you.
We did get a, a letter from the Conservation District that there was no active violation, so. That did come in this morning, so.
Well, they're not looking at what's growing necessarily.
Oh, they are.
They, they are, that, they were part of this discussion, I mean, I, we raised the discussion because you brought it up at the last meeting, so. We did raise that and they were part of the discussion and they said, what's being done is correct. But I'll, I'll double check if it meets. What they were sued for by. Penn.
Meadow mix is the closest thing to a forest. As far as runoff. That's why it was changed to a meadow. And the Conservation District would absolutely be requiring seat tags.
Okay, yes, if you could find that.
Yeah, I'll find out on Thursday.
I did drive by there and. There was more dirt out on Back Mountain Road, but I, I don't know that. What they do on that. But I did notice trucks going in and out.
You're supposed to sweep it.
Uh, nothing on the kennel, um. Leo, where are we at with the food truck ordinance? I thought we all put in our thoughts and we're waiting on it.
In reviewing the final, the amended draft was sent out, I believe, to the board in July.
Yeah.
Based on that, I mean, I, all the comments were incorporated.
Okay, okay, then I'm gonna make a motion that we schedule and advertise the food truck ordinance hearing. Can we do that?
Yeah, is there a second? I don't know why we want a food truck ordinance, when we had a, a, an event here on Saturday, Sunday. That we invite food trucks here. And I read that whole ordinance and it's so restrictive. Uh, when, what do we have the right to tell somebody they can't operate from, until ten AM in the morning?
You can pull over on the side of the road and run your business when all our businesses that are here are paying. A lot of things.
I don't have a problem with putting a permit fee on, on a food truck to operate in our township, a reasonable permit fee. But to tell them, to tell a, a owner of a business when they can operate and that they have to, they have to be so far away from a fire hydrant. I mean, there's laws in the state, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, it's, is it thirty feet from a fire hydrant you can't park? Or is it fifteen feet, I, I mean, I'm scared, I know it's.
You're catching me off guard.
Anyway.
I was a detective for most of my.
I saw a patrolman here somewhere, did he leave? But anyway, I know when I, if, I don't park next to fire hydrants normally, but if I do, I make sure I stay far enough away.
The problem is that they don't have a bath, they don't necessarily have a bathroom, they don't have actual parking. I mean, we make all our res- our businesses jump through hoops and these people can just pull over the side of the road and operate their business.
Only if the person that owns the property allows them to operate there, the person that owns the property says you can't park here to operate, they can't do it. So, I, I, again, I don't, I don't see the purpose of it, especially after what we just saw here over the weekend. You, you know, next year, if we do something this restrictive.
Rich, that was different, that's totally different.
Well, it's an event, but we see what the event turns out to be next year, if you tell somebody you can't operate in our township until ten AM. Uh, or you can't, I, I forget the closing time, but I thought that was ridiculous too, but. Again, that's my opinion, so if the board wants, there's a motion, there's a second. Um. Anybody else? Anybody in the audience wish to make a comment regarding this motion? Yes, ma'am, you have to come up to the podium, please, and tell us who you are, and you have one minute. I'm sorry, that's the, you know, if you don't wanna come up to the podium, then. Thank you, anyone else? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Nays, nay for me, I guess, I guess it's. Leo, I guess you got your marching orders.
I do, thank you, so. So where are we with the other ones? We. That we need to advertise. I bet that's that next to. Sitting with the board. They're sitting with the board.
Anything else?
Yes, yes, um, on the topic of sidewalks. I've, I've. Went through the minutes. Back in, starting in two thousand eighteen, okay, we had a master sidewalk plan. Okay, and a motion was made. To um, have the township engineer evaluate the development of a master sidewalk plan from Route seven fifteen to Warner Road. And um, then you amended the motion. To add street lighting. Jerry suggested sending a letter to all properties involved. And. Chad noted that's, once the properties are identified, they will be notified. Um, the discussion on grant possibilities and project specifics. And then the motion to limit the amount to fifteen thousand dollars. Okay, that was in two thousand eighteen. Two thousand nineteen. Okay, we were talking about Saint Luke's. Um, and you had a motion to send Saint Luke's a copy of the plan. Okay, twenty twenty one, you discussed the position, what the township's position was on sidewalks and curbing. And then there was an old jewelry store that you agreed to defer the sidewalk installation. On that. Fastboard made of twenty-two, you got a nine hundred thousand dollar grant. No match requirements and the township is responsible for engineering and permitting, will get cost estimates on the engineering. And there are other things that happened along the way, I see no vote. Were we ever approved that we were actually gonna do this project, we voted to apply for grants, we voted. Um, we. That, after that one vote for John, we instructed him to do things, but we never, it was never voted on. And. I think. There's, there's no plan, I, not that there's no plan. I don't know what the plan is, this board, this current board has never really addressed it, I don't even know if they even know what it's about. I think we should put a pause on it. Um, until we get the actual estimates, see the plan, what the phases are, when they could possibly happen, what the cost is. I don't believe it's gone out to bid yet, so um. I wanna make a motion that we postpone the TASSA project until all commissioners are brought up to speed. And the project costs and grants are reviewed. Do I get a second?
I'll second for discussion only. Um. Jared, have there ever been any, any votes?
Yes, this was approved by Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero two with a five to zero vote.
What year?
Twenty twenty four.
And who voted, who voted affirmative? Yeah, who were they?
Yeah, this, this is, this is part of six different grants as it's tied in with the. Uh, Learn Road Roundabout and the uh Pork Shop Realignment with uh Old Mill Road and Learn Road as well.
This is not the TASSA project, yeah. Where does it say TASSA?
Transportation alternatives set aside, that's.
I also have.
Isn't this just agreeing to the grant, this isn't no- nothing to do with. This is the grant resolution.
And, and we've done resolutions for all six grants that are tied to this as well.
Right, but we've never approved the project, Leo, I'll just ask you to weigh in on the legality. Don't we have to vote that we're actually gonna do this?
May I see the resolution?
Sure.
We, we've also made the motions to award uh. The TPD. As well, same thing with easements and. Uh. The appraisals as well. Um, but I mean, I, I do have uh forty-one meetings worth of minutes where this has been talked about by John.
Well, it's been talked about, it's been on the agenda and we've been getting. Updates. But it was never voted to actually do it, I don't know how much it's gonna cost. We, we were told we had to pay back funds, I don't think we've received any cash yet, cause we haven't done anything yet.
You're correct, but we spent money that we normally would not have spent on this.
Well, we should have voted on that and I don't see that vote either, I think we just need to pause it, take a look so we all know what's going on, get it all together. And then.
Yeah.
Move forward and advertise for these people to come in, have a work session. Send this letter that Jerry wanted to do in two thousand eighteen and also that we were required to do, um. In January of twenty twenty four. Uh, a point of talking with the property owners about temporary and permanent easements, one of the requirements for this grant is to have public participation. One way to suggest it is to place a board on display showing the extent of the project and what is taking place. One way to suggest it is to place a board on display showing the extent of the project and what is taking place. Well.
That would be done.
I understand that, but if people don't know we're doing it, they don't know to come in and look at a board. Letters weren't sent out like the Knox box.
So I understand what you're saying, but I mean, it's it's literally been talked about for as long as I've been on this board. TASSA has been on John's radar. My, I mean.
We've secured three of the four easements.
Don't need sidewalks, I'm not coming on that, but what what are the implications at this point? Like, how much have we spent and what are the implications as far as these grants go?
That's what I think we need to pause it to find out. It's a lot of information that has to be dug out, explained. I'd like to s-. I did look at the board, but I don't know what phase two, three, four. I I don't even know. I don't know. Shame on me, because I've been here, but I don't know.
So again. This is done with six different grants and they're all tied together. We've been. Working on these grants since twenty eighteen. Uh, so that we don't have to put any match in so far, if you.
There is no match on a TASSA.
Why does it say match one hundred thirty thousand those those sixty? Is that being matched?
And the other.
Other grants.
Other grants, yeah.
So so far, uh, of money that we've already spent, uh, we're still pending a uh. Easement from Arc in the amount of two thousand dollars and uh. Atresos easement uh in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, those are still pending, but so far between engineering, legal. Uh, grants administration, we've spent two hundred twenty thousand, four hundred sixteen dollars and thirty-three cents on Pasa. And eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars on Learn Road. Um, and that also.
Yeah, I'm only talking about TASSA. But.
But well, the the problem is they're all tied together.
Anyway, that was never covered by the grant.
But we wouldn't have spent that money if we didn't go forward with this grant again.
You had, we had to investigate and that's what we did, but we never voted to actually do the project.
All grants would have been approved by resolution.
John has, John has has told us repeatedly for the last forty, forty-one minute minute, yeah, meetings. That he had, he and his team has been out there with the state and federal folks permitting the sidewalks, getting the right of way. Planning where the curbs will go, planning where the sidewalks will go, all the way along this corridor, including the pork shop there at Pigeon Way, is it still called? Instead of Learn Road.
Separate project.
It it's all tied together and and.
Together, but they were separate projects.
It's just sidewalks have been talked about since, like you said, twenty eighteen. And you voted to do this and now for whatever reason, for whatever. That was not what I'm, I think Jared said. We all voted, we all voted.
Or resolution to go for a grant.
Accept the grant, right?
Why? Why would you vote to accept something if you're not going to approve it?
Because I thought it was already a done deal and I I was out.
You thought it was a, well, right now, after all the money we spend, I would kind of agree with you. It's a done deal.
It's done deal.
Well, how much more do we have to spend? Because it's not even done yet.
But so the the funding secured is almost one point nine. In grants.
But that's not just for the sidewalks.
It's it's for it's for.
It's between all three projects, correct?
Yeah.
There's there's major concerns.
Not talking about the other projects. For these projects, right?
But they're all tied together. We would have to submit scope of work alignments, which at this point our grants administrator is concerned that we've. Put in for extensions for so many years.
Would they give us grants again? Well, that's what I'm reading, that's my thinking.
That's from the grant writer and that's probably true, but we haven't gotten the money yet, so no harm, no foul.
That's not necessarily so.
We haven't gotten the money, you could.
We got to stink on us if we turn it down.
Well, not only that, we've spent taxpayer money that we would not have spent if we didn't receive these grants as approvals to be given.
You had to do the investigation to get to know if you even want to do it. That's what's in the minutes. We're gonna. Find out what our position is. We're gonna look into this. We're gonna have John get us some quotes. We were investigating.
This was long before the investigation. This is twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
We have to spend before the grants are gonna kick in because the money we're spending now is not covered by the grants. We was told we had to pay back two hundred, that that's not accurate. We do not, we were paying that two hundred. Just by moving forward. It's not reimbursable. And we're we're gonna have to pay more because we're not there yet, right, John? We haven't bid it. We do we actually have a total cost? I don't think we bid it yet. We haven't awarded a bid.
I believe Penn Dot does the bidding. We we turn the plans over to Penn Dots and they do the bidding.
This turns into an ECMS.
Yes. Yeah, we're, it's already in the ECMS system.
I I don't think there's any harm in stopping and looking at where where we're going. I'm not saying don't do it. Let's see where we're at and let the businesses know and get their feedback. Maybe they love it. But we said we were gonna do that. We were obligated to do it and putting a board on the wall when you don't tell the people what we're doing is not public participation.
But it's been on the agenda for two years.
I believe, Ellen, I do believe that one of the requirements.
That I know.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I literally, John has talked about it every single meeting that I've been a part of, every meeting.
One of the requirements of the grant was, in fact, that I make a public presentation, which I did. And that we post the project in the lobby, which we have done. That was a requirement of the grant and we did that.
And and we approved all the easements.
So Leo, where do we stand with not approving the actual project, but everything that goes with it?
I I think the actual project was approved. And it's been moving along. I asked Turkey Hill how many times they've been contacted about putting in sidewalk.
Where's the vote that we approved it?
Your your resolution accepting the grant.
But I've been told numerous times, accepting the grant doesn't mean you have to do it.
Who tells you that?
Well.
Well, at least have money and you're not gonna.
Accepting it doesn't mean you have to do it. You asked me where the approval was. The approval was accepting the grant. And this board has continuously, as long as I can remember, uh, continuously. Progress, we we've obtained three out of four easements. We've been hammering Turkey Hill to put in their sidewalks as part of this project, to tie into this project. It's reported on on every meeting. John made a presentation. The. This 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 project has been approved. Now, that doesn't mean you can't pause the project, but the project itself has been approved.
So at the last meeting, I expressed that. That I would be against it if we could, if it wasn't voted on by a previous board. If it's been voted on by a previous board, I would change my opinion.
But where's the vote?
By the acceptance of that resolution.
That's a great.
Well, why would we, why would you guys have taken the grant?
We knew what's up, we weren't gonna do it.
Right.
Representative Madden, would you look favorably on us if we gave a grant back midstream?
Absolutely not. It's a part of getting more grants.
Yeah.
If you turn a great event or if you apply for extensions, right? It weakens your credibility with obtaining new grants and things.
And that's what this.
Plus have solid plan when you ask for a grant.
And that's what this, the grant writer has alluded to in their, in their uh. Right, in their letter.
That was a big problem, excuse me, I'm sorry. That was a big problem with returning lane going into a open and country place. Um, the 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 township approved it and then there was all kinds of hassles with Penda and they got two extensions. And they were told with the second extension, if you don't get this job, forget about it.
And and Representative Madden, that's why we have applied for the extensions. We've been dealing with Penn Dot and the federal government on the six eleven corridor. Since probably the grant has been approved to get the permitting and now we're at the final stages. That from what John has told us, at meeting after meeting, that probably in the spring of the year. The bits will go out to contractors to break ground and start moving the, moving it forward.
So it, we need to know how much this is gonna cost the taxpayers between uh until the grant kicks in. Until, right, what is unreimbursable? I would like to know that number.
It's ninety thousand dollars right now. That's that's.
There's more coming. John's still working on it. Right, John? You're still doing stuff.
Yes, I would say. Well, it it it's been fuzzy because we've had three projects, uh. The Learn Road Roundabout, that's that's been completed, bid and delayed. Uh, the partway through the TASSA project. We added the intersection project to that, so that's what we're working on right now, the two of them together. Uh, I'm at the. When we first started this project, we were told Penn Dot was not gonna review it, which was not true. Uh, and they they've been dealing with Penn Dot is difficult, but setting that aside. I think we've got one more round of submissions to make to Penn Dot, which are close to being complete. And then we still have to load some stuff into their ECMS system and do some things like that, but we're. We're on a final stretch.
So I would be in favor. I I'd like to know all, everything that went into this. Without pausing it to. Long enough to create a delay and and seek another extension on the grant and and put us further. As Representative Madden said, with that, you know, egg on our face for extended grant over and over and over.
It's not gonna, it's not gonna happen this year, right? Because we're into the.
No, it's not. The concrete, the concrete.
No, it's not gonna happen this year, but we, but. We have, we have a meeting every three or four weeks with, there's a liaison between. Uh, the grant writers, ourselves and Penn Dot. And she has told us that we 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 better get this ready for spring. Uh, and it's not because we haven't been trying. I mean, we've had delays, we've had, we had scope change. Uh, we've then brought, like I said, the intersection into it. Uh, but she's just saying, um. For the same reason as Representative did, that, you know, it's not good to delay it any longer than necessary.
And I can tell you. We just had the utilities meeting about two weeks ago, three weeks ago at this point, too.
Once it's in the ECMS system, the we've been pinned on every day, the the uh, the advertisement upfront is thirty days. If it's a fast track project, from from bid, from let date to award is ninety days. So that's already four months.
Yeah, I mean, that would take you to January first. I mean, I think we're trying to. You know, get something into the system by January or February so that we have a spring start. That's her early summer at the latest.
We're waiting on the one easement from Arc, but Christie's plan was to have this ready for bid by the end of this year.
So in in light of the fact that it was voted on, I'd say we should, we should get caught, brought up to speed. What Ellen's asking for. I just don't think we should. Now I don't.
Yeah, there's no need to to pause it. That'll just, that'll just deter it until next fall. Then we can't do it in the fall. It'll be next, it'll be twenty seventh. It'll be the spring of twenty seven.
So my other question is, this is a phased project, right? So we're only doing TLC to. Here, Old Mill, right? It's.
We're we're going from. Here, Old Mill, down to the old municipal building.
Both sides.
Both sides.
From TLC, right, from starters? Or no, not that far up?
Not that far up.
Here.
Yeah, you have it.
From here, from this intersection, Old Mill.
So that's not a phase that cost us over two hundred thousand dollars taxpayer money, right? Because getting ready for it, I understand that. It's not. I would think it would cost us similar for every phase, getting ready to.
May, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the con-. I don't know what the most recent construction cost is, but you know, you've got to estimate ten to fifteen percent for. Engineering permitting. I mean, when you get into right of way acquisition, that drives the cost up.
So so when I'm talking about taxpayer money, it's not just the two hundred or the three hundred that we're gonna have spent. To do this project, you should do it all or not at all, right? I mean, to do phase one and be done. That makes no sense. Sidewalks are going nowhere and then I think they're still going nowhere. But how much is it gonna cost the taxpayer to complete this entire phase one through whatever, however many phases it is?
I I I don't know the answer to that, Ellen.
Yeah, I I think we should know that.
Jared, is is there more grants available on phase two and phase three, or is this encompass?
We have not applied.
So I'm saying though, so phase one. X amount of money in grant funding and then when we're ready for phase two. Can we apply for additional grants?
Absolutely.
I think the other, the other thing that I could just add is, as other developments, and I think Representative Madden pointed out earlier. As they occur within that same area, they'll be installing sidewalks.
Yep.
For example.
Wendy's.
Wendy's, for example, the the church next door that they proposed a restaurant. Um, there's some development that's being proposed, I believe, across from Wawa. All those little projects. Will be responsible to put their own sidewalk in as part of the land development, so that'll help fill in.
Right.
Fill in the the gaps.
Kind of like what Wawa already had.
Yeah, Wawa has put it in and if some people, you know, if any one of these businesses. Sell and they change the, you know, the configuration of the lot, they're gonna be required to put inside walls.
They're gonna need, the restaurants just change, so they're gonna need a.
Anthony's Development.
Engine use requires a land development submission.
Then would the board support sending all these businesses a letter telling them this is coming and have a meeting with them? I think we owe it to them. Monica has it.
If you look at Brookstead and Cranberry Run, Wawa Dual Brand Hotel.
Both Wawa's.
But that's what I mean, both Wawa's, they're, they all are required to put inside of.
Monica Henryville, um, I just have a question. The where Letty used to be, it's now, um. A electric bike next to Wendy's Wendy's. I was looking at that today. If you put sidewalks there, he has no parking, so he's. A neighbor of mine lives down the road. He's new to the area, um. Do I need to give him a heads up that he needs to find another location? Because there's, if you put sidewalk. You know where I'm talking about, where Letty used to have his place and then it was like a flower shop of some sort. There's like three spaces. And then there's a private drive, like, he'll be out of business, I think, if you put a sidewalk there. And then there's a couple of places going down six eleven, DG Necklace or whatever it's called now. Like, there's places that. You back out of a space, you'll be backing over a sidewalk. So have you thought, I guess I should ask you, have you thought about those businesses and where they're gonna park? Or are they gonna park far away and walk down the sidewalk?
We we did back in seventeen, I think it was, Jared said, we did a concept plan. That was what, five, eight years ago. Uh, we did go past these businesses. We did zigzag sidewalk where we could. Some places were. Outside of the Penn Dot right of way where we have the land, uh, if we find areas where there is no room, we go into the Penn Dot right of way. We try to avoid being inside the Penn Dot right of way just because we do, but.
I know Steels is concerned. They're concerned about how that's gonna affect them.
Yeah, and and we.
I just, I I do agree that the businesses, like I said, my neighbor, um, I I don't have his phone number. He lives down the road from me, but. I I can guarantee he's not aware of any of this, being that he's new. I think he's only been in business there for probably within the last year.
He's not in this phase, though.
I I understand that. I mean, I thought from last meeting we were talking about. Down from, you know, it going from the BP all the way. Like, now it sounds really ridiculous that. Right in the middle of town, we're gonna start the phase.
You gotta start somewhere.
Well, yeah, it would make sense that.
There's a constraint.
Right? So where the buses are.
I'm sure that that made part of your decision. There's a bridge constraint just north of here that you, I wouldn't start there either.
But I do think that the bu- the businesses have a right to know, and I know you've been talking about it, but I do think newer businesses, whatever, send the letters out like you did in Knox Boxes and let them know what's going on. I think it's, I think it's only fair, especially with my neighbor. I mean, I feel like I need to go walk and say no.
With Alan's point about money that you've laid out. There, I give, I mean, we've awarded grant money to people for engineering costs and things like that. There's a local, there's LPAP, local. Um, planning, um, I forget what the acronym stands for, but that gives grant money for these spaces of a project, the Penn Dot. Uh, local development and planning, that's what it stands for. And then, um, the multimodal from Penn Dot. That money can be used for these stages of planning and engineering costs and money that you lay out before the big project. I'm not, I know that, I know that we, I remember getting a half million dollar grant for the Y. Right? Because they've been building a new Y for twenty years now, um, for them to do an engineering study. So it does happen. There are monies for this and. I'm happy to work with you to find out what those grants are and try and help you.
But I I think the TASSA uh wouldn't allow certain grants like to cover. I'll just say they would allow, but I I thought, but.
Yeah, no, I I've checked out, they said there are instances where you can, you can ask for money. And then to the point of the sidewalks, um, you know, my office is right there, um. Near, across the street from Friendly's, we're right next to, we're like a plaza, a little plaza away from Walmart. I mean. Near across the street from Friendly's, we're right next to, we're like a plaza, a little plaza away from Walmart, I mean, from Wawa. And my my staff, they walk every single day to Wawa to get lunch and things like that. I just can't even like impress upon you enough how important it is because we have all these businesses, right? And not everybody has a car, or the other day I had to go to the eye doctor right across the street at Hazelton Eye. I did not get my car and and drive across the street, right? I walked. So the idea of having this ease of access for people who don't have cars to walk down six eleven, it's just. And I understand the point of some businesses aren't gonna have the space for a sidewalk, but we've got to do it where we can. And if there's blacktop, there's blacktop, right? So it's better than the road that people are walking on. Um, I I fall for this project, so you contact me in any way I can be helpful. I will certainly. Be as helpful as I can. I just think it's an upgrade. I think it's necessary. I think we just are ruining your Pocono Township, right? There's new businesses coming all the time and. It's a great place to live.
Thank you. Anything else? Anybody else have a comment on this? There's a motion before we vote? Okay, so, uh. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion fails.
I'm gonna make a motion to send out letters to the affected businesses to set up a work session and present the plan to them so they can give us feedback.
Second.
Discussion, anybody? I would just say that I believe all the affected businesses have are on notice because they've re. They've re- been requested for either permanent or temporary construction easements.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm not saying you shouldn't have the meeting, but I don't believe they're in the dark.
Yeah, I, this isn't for a. Meeting, this is, this is, well, this is in a letters instead of a work session.
Yeah, I don't see the purpose of it, to be honest with it, because they, like John said, they've all been knocked on their doors. They either be paid for the right of.
I would double check that data.
Yeah.
Because. I don't know that all business owners have been contacted regarding it.
Within the project area?
Within the project area.
Certain businesses sit right here, so they've been talking about it for the last two years, right?
You're, oh, you're not the project there.
Oh, it's, oh, yeah, because initially, see, I I was on the same wavelength as Monica. It was literally coming down all of six eleven.
The only people that wouldn't have been. Contacted would be if we're totally within the Penn dot right of way. If we touched anybody's private property, they have been contacted.
So 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 Old Mill, so, okay, so I'm driving down six eleven. So on the right hand side, it starts at Old Mill and goes down to the old municipal building. Right? So then on the left hand side, it would start at the pest control company. I don't know which one that is. Sykes Brothers, is that what that is?
Well, it actually starts with the intersection with, we're hitting into you guys.
Yeah, so that, so so.
Starts right there, it's in the Turkey Hill, who was gonna put their own.
Okay.
And then it goes south. And it go, there is a pest, I think that's a pest.
Yes, right there on the corner.
We we need it all sorts of right there from that.
And it goes all the way down to, I'm assuming directly approximately the municipal building. So what is that odd lot? Is that with that little stores?
Yeah, we go past the odd lot.
Okay, so to Friendly or to Dairy Queen?
Dairy Queen probably has their own sidewalk.
They do. No, they have a square across the.
I don't think we go that far.
Okay. To resort beverage area, those. So resort beverage is.
So now you can see what the thing is.
And it's gonna limit then, or or is Pendot, well, Pendot just showing H O Ps then to all these driveways, and it's gonna limit the entrance?
We are heading down some of them, which, for example, in front of the park from there. Yeah, and that that was part of the way. I mean, it took us six months to negotiate that.
It's a big school community bank.
So there's there's sites, this is where the whole Denny's was, right? No, that's the fireworks store.
But like.
So if Wendy's.
No, this is where.
Why doesn't everybody else?
That's the fireworks store. There's the bank. This was, this was where the old.
Wendy's was on a deferral, as was Turkey Hill.
And Turkey Hill, they both, they're making them get it, and they're not in this zone.
Turkey Hill is up here, yeah.
It's not all the way down to. No, it's before the, the, yeah.
Here.
So it's the period beginning, it's not ever in front of.
No. But well, naturally. This is.
So it, so this, this is the old New York Deli.
So John, I I don't understand, like, we're telling Wendy's and Turkey Hill they need a sidewalk, but that's not in this zone.
I think it is right here, Alan.
It it's in the overall plan, but.
I know the overall plan, but why are we hurrying them when we don't know when that's gonna happen for everybody else?
We are hurrying now, we are hurrying Turkey Hill because we said we were gonna defer it until it makes sense. It don't make sense.
That that was all part of the man.
Yeah, they're tied in on the south side of this.
Yeah, initially, again, I thought it was a whole road thing, not necessarily. It's been explained so.
Yeah, no, I think. The end of it, this this will extend that and.
See, when you move up, you know that much for a lot of the structure.
Steels doesn't need them in this project. Steels isn't in the zone, right?
They are.
The Steels hardware in the zone?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, they're outside of the passes zone. But they. They submitted a land development project. And a condition of the land development was that they put in sidewalk. It was deferred until the township. Directed them to install. Once we determined that we were gonna proceed with this phase. And they were adjacent to it, and it's likely for them to add on to this phase, they were directed within their side. We supply bridges, ask to find out where they are, and I coordinate with their engineer because you gotta make some adjustments with the yards and theirs, just make sure they tie together.
So they submitted a land development plan, that changes everything because wa- like Wawa. The Wawa, Earl's Wawa is gonna be put in. So so as part of a land.
So the restaurant, so will the new business that's going, smugglers, there's a bunch of them that are gonna come.
They don't necessarily need to do it right now because they're they're outside the scope, but if it's if it's on their landfill, we just defer it.
But we only deferred that one because of it's a sidewalk to nowhere.
Today. Today, but it's somewhere down the road.
Somewhere down the road, they, yeah, I understand.
Somewhere down the road.
So why wouldn't we let Turkey Hill wait and build it when it makes sense to, that's gonna touch?
Because they got permission. They're they're in the same process as we are.
It makes sense now, because people can be walking up from. Anywhere down near the old municipal building, they wanna go to Steel's Hardware, they've got sidewalk all the way.
So there's one, two, three, four.
They're not affecting.
They're they're partially affected.
But the properties in between, Wendy's feels won't need them, one, two, three, at this point. And this is, and they're not deferred because they've been there forever, and that's fire.
But they submit a land development. We've gotta find a ground.
Right?
To.
Yeah, I correct, it starts here. So it's not needed here.
Because you have a bridge right here that you gotta worry about later.
Yeah, that bridge, that. Well, I guess you can open it back up if you want.
So there's, there's three businesses.
I would never do that.
Plus the fire department. That's affected, right? So you've got, you've got Sykes Brothers. You've got the fireworks store, the community bank and trust, the sidewalk does not go to the old New York Deli building.
No.
This is the bank.
Yes.
And this is the, and this is the fire department. So really, you have four, four businesses plus the fire department that are actually getting sidewalks.
And and we've.
And.
And you've been Turkey Hill, and we've, we've gotten.
We've gotten all those easements except for R.
And and we've gotten easements from everybody. They're not always permanent. They may just be temporary easements, but they've all been contacted. They know this project is.
Okay.
Can I interrupt you one second here? Shouldn't this be, like, this be discussed in executive session? Instead of in front of all this public?
It can't.
It should all be.
It's gotta be in public.
Yep. We, it was, you have a lot of questions about things. Question are figured out back there. Now you come out and present. When you have, when everybody up there, you people all have a good understanding, you know what you're talking about. It's not like you're talking behind closed doors because you're gonna come out here and present after the fact. The, uh, open meetings law requires that. Uh, all topics be discussed in public with the exception of ongoing or potential litigation. Acquisition of property where you're negotiating the sale or or purchase of property and personnel. It just seems like it's a big debate here. It's it's not going very far. No, 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 I I I understand, but you're watching the process at work. Um, trust me, trust me, trust me. If we went in there and discussed all this and came out and said, here's where we are.
You'd be furious.
You'd have, you'd have a bunch of people lining up saying we violated.
They already say we're not transparent.
The open meeting.
Yeah, yeah. You're totally trash.
It just seems like. No, I, I. The knowledge of what you're talking about isn't really discussing anything. It's just giving members facts and figures. And that's it, that's all.
You're watching how the sausage is made. And sometimes it's not pretty.
That's one of the reasons why things don't get done.
Uh, you're absolutely right. A hundred percent. I don't know where we are anymore.
There's a motion on the table.
Oh, that's right, to send letters.
If every one of them has has given right away or been contacted for right away, then I think we've, and there was a a a a. Presentation done years sometime ago.
There's no sense in sending a letter, so there's already. I'm gonna make a motion that we table this. Is there a second?
Table what?
Table this motion to send letters out. I guess I don't get a second? No, not.
If you send, send letters to people who've already.
That's why I said to make a motion to table it.
Yeah, or or you could.
Yeah, vote yes or no, right?
Well, we could do that, too. Let's vote. Well, first of all, we have to open up to the public. Does anybody wanna comment before we go ahead? Everybody gets one minute.
We're already good.
Nobody. I'm saying we changed our policy, so given you the opportunity, we're transparent, right, Charlie? There you go.
You approve.
So there's nobody, all, uh. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, no.
What motion are you voting on?
Are are, aren't we making a motion to send letters?
There was, there was not, there was not a second to table.
There was no second to table.
There was no second to table it.
So Ellen's was just still on the table.
This is Ellen's motion and my second.
For letters.
Just the letters.
To the businesses.
Right.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Nay carries. Nope, the motion fails. Anything else, Ellen?
I think that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Wyng?
Uh, I've worked with Pocono Manor cottage owners. They've spent considerable time and money, uh, going all the way back to nineteen ninety seven. To have. That area designated as a national historic site through the National Park Service. Um, and that was done through the P A historic and. The PHMC, Pennsylvania Historic and Museum Commission. The zoning overlay district, um, proposing would, uh. Recognize that. So I wanna change the wording of the motion to, uh. Have Leo. Auth, I want to authorize the solicitor to review and edit the historic overlay. Uh, for presentation to the commission of the, to the board of commissioners at the next meeting.
Second.
Not go to the planning commission in Monrovia.
Second, any discussion from the commissioners?
Yes, um, the man are burned, so what's his, what's left that's historical?
That that's not in it anyway.
Not all are.
Right. If you look at the. If you look at what was included in the packet, it's the cottage owners. Specifically.
Yeah, sure. Where he's still.
They are, yeah, yeah. I'm sure there's, there's folks here tonight that would like to, uh.
I'm gonna give them the opportunity to do it.
Yeah.
And they did send it there.
I'm sorry.
Park Service documents and their state museum documents to the township as well.
And it'll be part of this, it'll be part of this.
Sir, hang on, please.
It'll be part of this overlay to qualify for this. You would have to have those documents that that. We're not just gonna. Like stuff and say, that's all, let's, let's make it to the historic overlay. So there'll be requirements for the. The National Park Service Register and the Historic and Museum Commission. Anything else from the commissioners? Sir. Please tell us who you are.
Uh, my name is Don Snyder, and I reside at Pocono Manor. And, um, uh, th- this has pretty much come to a head, excuse me, uh. Um, uh, I've been instrumental in trying to push this in front of the commissioners and, uh, asking for their assistance in. Uh, letting us protect that asset that we have. In nineteen ninety seven. Um, the National Historic, uh, or the National Park Service officially made Pocono Manor a National Historic District. Um, it is the only historic district you have within your township and potentially the only one you'll ever have. Um, the, the, uh, Gene Wolf, a historian from the University of Pennsylvania, we commissioned. To put together our offering and, and within it. We discovered so much we didn't know. Booker T. Washington is, uh, spoke there. I mean, the, the history and. The legacy is just something that we all cherish and need protection and help in that protection. The municipal planning code of Pennsylvania. Mandates that municipalities protect their historic assets. We, in turn, at Pocono Manor, have deed restrictions that give us the ability as stakeholders. Something that you all don't have, um, to protect those. Restrictions on our own. Well, we've been fighting and fighting and fighting. Trying to defend ourselves against these relentless Airbnbs. We get another LLC, comes in and buys. One of these big historic homes and. And they turn it into a business. The the clientele is unvetted. The the harm it's bringing to this magnificent asset, we've had gunplay. It's within the power of. Your governance here to give us some relief. This overlay is what we're, we're asking of you. It's. We don't want. More government, more regulation. We just want some assistance in helping us protect the asset. We continue legally to fight these intruders as a group. And it's ten thousand here, ten thousand there, we've been expending. We get to the goal line and. They sell it. And then someone else comes in and the battle starts over and over again. When this Airbnb short term rental thing became the, the niche. Municipalities drafted ordinances to address the concerns of their citizenry. Pocono Manor, probably the oldest subdivision within Pocono Township, founded in nineteen oh two. Happened to fall into the resort district. The protections that were afforded R one and R two. For no short term rentals. Were missed on us. We don't look to curtail the ability of Pocono Manor in their, in their quest to. Have a new hotel operator replace the, uh, the old inn. Uh, we, we think it'd be a wonderful thing. But we, we, we think. We not think, we know, we, 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 we need to protect the asset of the community. Uh, to the historic remnant that that we're in, uh, that we've inherited. I mean, it's a. I've been, I'm seventy five years old, be seventy six soon. I've been there for almost forty years. I can remember going there as a young boy. You know, I mean, it was a fantastic experience. We're charged with protecting this in my lifetime and, 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 and those of my neighbors that care, we, we look at it. Uh, as our responsibility to make sure this asset is protected. And we hope you as commissioners will feel the same way and, and, and look to help us in this. I'm long winded here, um, I've got a lot of neighbor here, neighbors here that would just give a, uh, a hooray for this effort. The, we don't wanna tie you up. We know this, these meetings get long and, but please, I mean. Do, do us a favor, help us, help the municipality, preserve this asset. Um, there's so few of them left, the, uh, it, it breaks my heart to think that. We're gonna be faced with thi- this chaos that this has brought about. So this is an easy fix. So this is an easy fix. It's within your the, the scope of what you're allowed to do according to municipal planning code and, uh, uh, we'd be tickled to death if you could help us. Thank you so much.
I have a question for you. Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
I just gonna say, we'll try to do the right thing. That's why Leo will, uh, solicit a resolution to get it on there. So there's nobody that can, you know, jeopardize it. As long as five of us are, four of us or three of us vote affirmatively for it. And I can tell you, I will be one that will vote for it.
And, and, and I appreciate it from my heart. I mean, it's a. Also do, it's a, um, you know, we want to be, I want someone a hundred years from now and to enjoy the same beauty that we, we have.
Exactly.
And I'm sorry, ma'am, I didn't mean to.
Do you have a homeowners association that will?
No, we don't. And we don't, the, the way this ordinance is, we won't need one, uh, we don't have one. Um, we have no desire to have one. Um, we've gotten along wonderfully without one for over a hundred and twenty-five years.
The reason I bring it up is because you could restrict the, uh, short-term rentals.
Well, we could, but it's, uh, uh, it's a slippery slope. We've looked at, we've looked at every revenue, every avenue and remedy you could think of and, uh, believe me, I've spent a ton of time on this. Uh, you know, I, I worked hand in glove with Gene Wolfe when she put together this historic offering. Uh, we first sent it to the museum commission in, in Pennsylvania and they nominated us to the federal government, you know, uh, i- if there was an easy way, it, it would have been done long before. This is an easy way for you to help us. I mean, it's,
Yeah.
It won't cost you anything and it, it'll cost you less because you're spending so much money on the police uh, chasing all these people and, and all the trash that they throw around. I mean, it's costing the municipality more to have this nu- nonsense and nuisance.
I'm hopeful you're historical, but Leo, you were concerned about the short-term rental and I thought if they took care of that, we, they would be good. That's why I brought it up.
No, no, what, what I, what I was, what I was concerned about is the draft that I received and how it dealt with that issue itself. Um, I've already started marking it up, um, so that it doesn't conflict with our current zoning ordinance and the current regulations of short-term rentals. But I think it's, should be an easy way to fix. Um, the other change that I'll be making is it will not be the Pocono Manor Historic District. It'll be the Pocono Township Historic District Overlay. So this, if somebody else meets the qualifications, having the federal and the state acknowledgement that it's a historic district and designates it as such, then somebody else could avail themselves of the overlay if they so require.
This was, this is.
Those are my initial comments to date.
And, uh, so wonderful. I, I like that. I mean, that.
But I mean, it's going to be a little more generic and broad.
Yep.
Because I think it needs to be, um, to pass any kind of challenge.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's what I'm mindful.
The underlying motivation was to, to recognize the historical significance. I've spent a lot of time up there in the past month. Every house has a plaque that's, you know, declaring it a, a national historic site and that's certainly worth, worth preserving.
And you know, there's, we have some folks here that I'm sure would like to say just a hello and, and, and hope you help us and, uh, I'm sorry for being so long-winded.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to? Now, we all agreed to one minute, so.
Good evening. I'm Russell Kramer. Um, my family business was Kramer's Home Center. We know a lot of you, obviously as customers. We serve the community for over a hundred years. My wife Sarah and I live at twelve park terrace in Pocono Manor. When we moved there, a lot of people knew where I'd lived before and I said, why did you move to Pocono Manor? I said, you know, you, you moved to Pocono Manor because of the beauty of the homes and you were so impressed with the community, but what you really found was the peace and serenity was what made living there so extra special. That has been destroyed by these unregulated Airbnbs. I can't tell you how they've broken up our neighborhood, caused so much turmoil and distress. We're fighting it, but we feel like we lose the battle because these owners come in from out of state. We win in the courts and all of a sudden they've sold the property to another interest and we start all over again. We're discouraged by the fact that the state and the communities aren't backing us up, not only for Pocono Manor, but for other communities in the Poconos. I ask you to please help us win this war so that we can live in peace and harmony again. Thank you very much.
I'll speak into the microphone for this one. So Pocono Manor is in my district, the hundred and fifteenth legislative district. And I stand with all of these people who want the overlay and want to protect their beautiful community that has such a rich historic history, right? Built by Quakers. Um, yeah, there's got to be some places that are sacred, right? That, you know, don't get littered with cans of beer and, and screaming and yelling till four o'clock in the morning. So I really hope that you will consider this and help these folks because it's not like they're not trying on their own. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can you vote? Yeah, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carried. Rich, Rich, uh, Rich, I'll circulate a draft, uh, probably at the end of this week. So the board has enough time to review it. The next step in the process is to then send it to both the Monroe County Planning Commission and the Pocono Township, uh, Planning Commission, because it is, it will be a zoning ordinance amendment. Just so the board knows the process.
So to, to let these folks know the timing, then that'll happen at the, potentially at the next board meeting, Board of Commissioners.
Authorization to send it to the planning commission, the planning commission ends, yes.
So then in, uh, it's October, then in November, we'll advertise.
Be appropriately advertised and voted, correct.
And then in December, it'll be the hearing and then the final vote.
You got it.
Okay. Uh, my, my only other item is a motion to have the township solicitor draw up a resolution prohibiting truck traffic on Backmount Road in Brookdale for safety concerns.
I'll second that. Uh, we'll need that to be amended to say to draw up an ordinance in order for it to be enforced by the police. It needs to be an ordinance, not a resolution.
I'll, if you'll accept that.
I'll accept that.
We'll change it. Resolution to ordinance.
Any discussion?
Uh, I'd like to just say why. It's, it's, it came to my attention that when six eleven and or nine forty back up, it's not sending people onto the state road, which is Sullivan Trail. It's sending people on our road, which is Brookdale and, uh, at Backmount. And if those aren't roads that are appropriate for trucks, this does not affect the construction of the solar field or, uh, anything that goes on at Brookdale because as always, local, local deliveries are excluded from that. So.
Anybody else have any, uh, questions? Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carried. Anything else?
No, it's all right.
Thank you, Mr. Bellardi.
Say Paul. Have you been down to the, uh, Barton Blaine Tech City?
Uh, so we did send a, a property maintenance notice, uh, on the twenty-first. Uh, we haven't heard anything back. So this coming Monday, I'll drive by, just take a look. Uh, if they haven't cleaned up the property, then we'll start formal enforcement. Uh, direct civil, formal enforcement.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything for Paul? Paul, thank you very much. I, we have your report. Uh, the chief, uh, reports on the first, uh, meeting of the month. So, uh, Mr. Belvin, township manager.
Do you have?
He's, he sent out his reports.
Yeah, I know.
I usually have my report the second meeting. That's okay.
All right. You're right. But he sent it out today.
I sent it, I, I, yeah, I always prepare for the second meeting a month. So I'll have to have that changed.
Yeah, yeah.
And when, by the way, it's fifteen feet from the hide. Fifteen feet. Thank you very much. Mr. Belvin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, a couple of things tonight. Uh, first one, PSAT's update. I had attended the manager and leadership summit last week, uh, with PSATs over in Allentown. There was class specifically on zoning and I just wanted to let the board know that Pocono Township received a shout out as one of the first townships to stop the warehouse proliferation within Monroe County. And as part of the example, they use our enterprise overlay district, uh, and the way that curative men was issued.
Cool.
Nice.
Uh, police wing update. Uh, Patrick, uh, John Tressler and I had met with the architect today, um, on some grading issues and stormwater issues. Um, that being said, uh, we had pushed back the presentation with PFM to the first meeting of October, uh, so that it coincides with the bidding. But we do move along with that. Uh, quick PennDOT update. A couple of people asked what's going on with Cherry Lane. Uh, all they're doing right now is just cutting the shoulders back for the winter. Uh, they do plan on, uh, doing a full overlay next year. Uh, seven fifteen project is started up again. They're starting to move a lot of dirt. Uh, we are tentatively set for closing, uh, the second week of October, but we have not received the official notice from PennDOT just from their contractor. So as that gets sent over to us, once we do, I'll get that updated on the Facebook and website as well. Um, Act one oh one, uh, I just wanted to pass this down, uh, for everyone. Uh, this is a recycling ordinance, uh, set forth by DEP. Uh, as some of you know that we participate in, uh, DEP, uh, recycling program. Uh, we actually have a, uh, leaf sucker that is done with a Act one oh one grant. Uh, so we met with Mike, Pat and I met with Mike Stettler from the Waste Authority in regards to staying in compliance and I'll send that to everyone digitally as well. Um, but we have to update and do a new ordinance for the Act one oh one recycling requirement. Um, so we can stay compliant with our leaf sucker, but also so that we can apply for additional grant funding. Uh, so that being said, uh, anyone who's watching the TVs before the meeting, uh, we will start doing, uh, leaf drop off events in the fall, uh, to stay in compliance with this. Uh, so that has, uh, since been, uh, updated on the Facebook and it'll go up on the website as well. Um, but we want, we obviously want to be able to capture that funding. So we just need to update that, staying within compliance. So I, like I said, I'll send that out digitally to everyone and Leo had drafted that tentative ordinance.
I just have a question for you and it's recycling, but like my, we have, we have to have recycling, right? So I have my garbage pickup separate recycling bucket and it gets dumped in right with the garbage. So they're not recycling. So what are we doing?
This, this is for leaf and brush recycling.
Yeah, I know it's different, but.
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't have a specific recycling ordinance within Pocono Township for.
For the matter. So this is not our, this isn't the one that we dropped because this, this references bottles and multi-family dwelling units and all that stuff. Are we just talking about leaves?
This is just leaves. I had.
They're talking about recyclables and multi-families and commercial properties, but whole nother beast than leaves. Not really.
Leo, if you want to have Anthony check what I had initially sent from DEP.
Well, that's based on which, why is it we need an amendment? No.
No, the, this, this is, uh, much more depth than what the Waste Authority is requesting of us. Sure. All right, uh, township website will be active by the end of the week. And if there's anything else anyone sees in it, uh, just let me know, uh, anything that needs to be changed. Uh, we've been going back and forth through zoning the past three weeks, um, to make sure that a lot more information is, uh, put up on our website. So it makes it easier for engineers and developers, uh, rather than to type the phone systems or extra appointments. Uh, as not sure if everyone had noticed, but, uh, we do have Monroe County two fifty coming up July fourth, uh, for the seventeenth centennial in July fourth of twenty twenty-six. Uh, as part of that, you know, Sullivan's March that had gone through Tannasville was a very important part uh, to getting us there. Big thanks to Public Works who cleaned the entire, uh, swale and, uh, drain out. But also to Kenny Prehart, who had taken both signs down of our, uh, national landmarks down and restored both those signs. So, uh, fingers crossed, I know we had talked about it a couple of months ago, but we are getting closer to getting the official approval, uh, as part of the Monroe County two fifty uh, to do a Civil War encampment, uh, right before Thanksgiving on the, uh, grassy hole in front of the old township building. So fingers crossed. I think that would be some interesting history to celebrate.
That was later in history.
Uh, food truck festival was a, uh, tremendous success. Uh, we had, uh, forty percent more vendors this year. And, uh, we had almost tripled the car count of last year, uh, Friday and Saturday being, uh, major turnouts. So, uh, big thanks to Jen and Erica, uh, for making that happen. Um, and the, the draw continues to grow for it. So make it bigger and better each time.
Nowhere far Saturday. Is, is this parking lot bigger than that?
It is. So we actually talked about that. We'll, we'll be moving the food truck festival up here next year.
We wanted to grow it and get the note ride. And I think now we'd be there. This is a nice venue for it.
Yeah. And reserve more arena spot.
You gotta call the hotline. I'd have gotten you.
First ever smash burger at the Pocono Food Truck Festival. Now I just can't stop eating them.
The big hit was actually the Thai vendor, what we had heard.
Brisket was pretty good too.
You say.
It was sausage and peppers.
You just went right.
Right there. Right for the brisket.
Lot of sauce.
Yeah.
Our last B O C and planning commission meeting are on our new YouTube channel for anyone who wants to view our meetings. Our handle is at Pocono Township.
There you go.
And, uh, finally, again, we talked about, uh, Lindsay's departure last meeting. Paul's officially taken over as our main uh, zoning official. So if everyone could just extend him a warm welcome. He brings tremendous amounts of experience. Happy to have him.
Oh, you gotta welcome. We're gonna hear the clap, Paul.
Uh, that's all I have. Any, any other questions?
Anybody have anything for Jared? Mr. Bregel?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few items, um, to piggyback on, um, Jared's comments about the, the, uh, Waste Authority. We're, we're really trying to work with them in a kind of a crawl, walk, run situation and, and, um, what we're doing with this fall leaf drop kind of gets us in compliance and, and the relationship that we've now established with that agency is, is much improved. Um, there's a new executive director there and there's a willingness on Pocono Township's part to participate. And, um, I think that's going in the right direction. So I just wanted to piggyback on what Jared had said there.
How's that gonna work? Like, where do we bring those leaves?
That's a great question. So what we're gonna do, again, the crawl, walk, run, we are s- scheduling two Thursday, Friday, Saturday, uh, periods in November where residents can bring their leaves and drop them at Mountain View Park. We'll have D P W employees there directing them. And then we'll take that, um, leaf litter and we'll compost it and we'll see how it goes this year. We may expand in subsequent years, but um, we're advertising to allow owners to pick up in addition to the beef pickups that we do already with the DPW. So it'll, this is something that we've added to our program this year.
The waste is going to be stored at the park.
It's, it's, it's only leaf matter. It's composted leaf matters. Yeah.
But there, there is a, there is a plan that's drawn out, uh, and the way it's delineated with a separator. Gave you.
Leaf sucker that goes on the trucks?
Yes, we do. And we use it.
Oh, can taxpayers pay to have their leaves picked up as a drop off?
No, we, we do offer that now. It is, you just have to bring it to the right away and, and you schedule an appointment with our DPW and they do.
I didn't know we did that.
We've always had to. That was actually part of the grant from the leaf sucker from twenty fourteen.
I thought we got waiver to do that. We didn't have to do it because we were so big.
So we don't have to have a recycling center. So that's the waiver that we have.
And we don't have to do it throughout the entire township. There's rural areas and I think the mindset is that in rural areas, a lot of people are going to blow their leaves into the woods, et cetera. This is for more of the, you know, that's.
Cause I didn't know that and I didn't hear.
I don't know if it's on, there's a, there's a number of people that, that do call.
Yeah.
Let's see how this goes, um, we're gonna be monitoring closely.
We are on bags, are you providing bags?
They, they bring the leaves to us, they can bring them in a truck, they can bring them in a trailer, they can bring them in bags. Don't bring them to us, we'll have somebody there so that we're not getting cans of, uh, bags of garbage and so forth. I have some experience with this several years ago.
And it's not a problem with D E P?
No.
No, they, they approved their plan.
I'm coordinating this with, with the D E P, with the Waste Man, Waste Authority.
Thank you.
You're welcome, um, stop sign installation on Cranberry was, uh, done today. So you'll, you'll see that, I, I'm sure we'll have some people that call in.
Did you hear that commotion, I believe?
Is it flashing?
Flashing, yes, flashing L E D, flashing L E D and stop bars, alright, so that went in today.
Cause I'll forget about that tomorrow.
Yeah, uh, well, something else to remember for tomorrow, at eight A M, we're gonna start our line striping. Uh, we called two or three meetings ago, I provided a list of roads that were gonna be. Line striping, including the ones that commissioners, uh, had requested, they're on the list, including Laurel Lake, yeah, and some other ones. So that work will be going on tomorrow, probably take us a couple of days to complete that, hopefully the weather's gonna cooperate, um. You might see that over at Kenny's Way and T L C, we're doing some, um. Parking expansion and cleanup, took down a couple of dead trees today. And as time allows throughout the fall, we'll be in there doing some, some major cleanup, all the way into winter, actually, we'll, we'll be doing some cleanup in there. The grass at seven fifteen and six eleven was cut back, I don't know if you get a chance to see that, Ellen?
Yeah, just today or yesterday.
But, but, but you know what they say, when you want something done, you gotta do it yourself, so.
Did you guys do it?
We did it.
Uh, cause I thought I saw you by the bank.
We did it, I didn't want you to be let down, so we went, did it, cause I couldn't count on.
Yeah.
Other people, you know, I'm hopeful that now we'll get a frost coming up soon and now that it's cut, we should be good for the rest of it, you're welcome. Um, our new D P W part-time position. Begin work today, um, we're excited to have him, he's got a lot of experience as mechanic, so we're looking forward to having. And turning some wrenches for us. And I've got a sewer maintenance project scheduled for next week, we're gonna be replacing pinch valves. Uh, down at valve station one. And then I have two motions. This is for. Sewer water service for this building, which we've talked about, uh. Leo's office has been kind enough to work with John and his office to come up with easements. And I believe we're on board with Fitz Morris Agency and also, uh, Pocono Heritage Land Trust. First, uh, temporary construction and permanent easement for water and sewer to serve this building. So, I don't know what the formality is for that, Leo, what, um. The board needs to accept those easements? That lease is prepared?
Uh, yeah, the board would need to authorize the, uh, procurement of those easements. I like that word, procurement.
So, yeah, there you go, second. Discussion. Anybody in the audience wanna comment on this? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried.
Unless there's any other questions for me, that's the extent of my report.
What about the motion to forward with municipal complex for the sewer easements, or is that the same?
They're, I combine those together, I don't know why they're on there separate.
Okay. Okay.
But, but thank you to Fitz Morris Community Services and, uh, Louis Traumman with Pocono Heritage Land Trust for working with us, not requiring. Any tax money come out, you know, the township coffers to get this done.
Yeah.
In, in turn, they helped us with easement for our, uh, three sixty walk around from here over to T L C.
Yeah, nice, it's nice to have that and welcome, Paul, look forward to working with you.
Does anybody have anything for Patrick? Patrick, thank you very much. John Tressler, township engineer.
I'm hoping to have my traffic study for Pocono Circle and Sky High Drive, uh, completed. I, I've got the study completed, but I don't have it in the board form, those are my recommendation. Uh, full stop at Pocono Circle with Penn Drive. And full stop at Penn Hills Drive with Pocono Circle. And on Sky High Drive, uh, full stop at Obermuth Terrace and full stop at Hartstone Circle. And I also am wanting to recommend that we can speed limit signs established at twenty five miles per hour. That's right now, most people on the signs do either one of those sections, uh, my road is a speedway. I believe this whole, whole long way solved the, uh. Speeding and, uh, I'll have a formal report outlining this.
Do you need anything tonight?
I don't think so, I think you should probably have a formal report.
Okay.
But I, I definitely give you a status.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, Iron Road. Not bad, Passup, we've been talking about that, T L C, I'm still working on the two bridge alternatives. Turkey Hill, they're still waiting, uh, they are talking to me. Uh, still waiting on, uh, their last round. That's all that I have, unless you have any questions. Oh, I, no, I'm sorry, I wanted to tell you that we are working on the zoning, um. Conflicts between the two.
Oh, good.
But I'm gonna deal with it before the, there's a lot of.
Yeah, that's fine, do it right, John, do it right, please.
Worth the time.
Do it right, thank you.
You know, that, look at, look at the waivers we just had and look at the fact that these people had a hundred and fifty four comments. We did for a million dollars. John, I have a question, do you know what, um. Some vehicles display the speed of the, the speed limit on the road on the dash. In mind, do you know where that information comes from?
No, I wondered the same thing, because my vehicle doesn't, actually, I do know that it's. I don't know how that is, it's, it's, it's spots the speed on the sign, because I do a lot of traveling down eighty one. And if, if the speed limit changes the minute I pass the sign. It changes online.
Pretty sure it's integrated into your Google Maps, because your Google Maps.
Cause you, and here's why I ask, if you turn onto Beeler from six eleven on the north side. It says the speed limit's fifty five on Beeler and you, right away, you pass a thirty five mile an hour speed limit sign. If you come from the other direction, it says it's thirty miles an hour and you pass a thirty five mile an hour speed limit sign, I'm just curious.
First of all, you can have, uh, but different speed limits on opposite side. They're rare, but it does occur.
Good luck doing fifty five down Beeler with those. I'm just curious.
I, I'm gonna work with Pat when we put speed limit signs up here. I mean, in a residential development, you really should have a, except if people pull out, but they should know what the speed limit is.
Didn't, I thought state code was every half mile.
That's the maximum.
Maximum does, does.
But that doesn't mean that they shouldn't do a little often for guiding voters.
Yeah, John.
Thank you.
We do update Google Maps when there is a speed limit change or. You know, we'll, we'll submit now that, uh, Cranberry, you know, we'll submit that as an intersection now, so. We do have access to the accountant that does that.
Can you change the location in the municipal building? Cause it keeps taking me downtown, should drive.
They'll go to the old building.
Anybody else anything else for John? Mister Vito?
Thank you very much, Rich, um.
Just, uh, you, you know, we, we remain somewhat, no, it's not somewhat, there's been a lot of zoning appeals. Uh, that we are prosecuting both in Commonwealth Court and in, uh, State Court, um. Then as, uh, we, decisions come in, we'll keep your appraised, um, I would need a motion this evening. Um, to proceed with, uh, getting an administrative search warrant. Uh, as a precursor to, uh, an action in court to remove a dangerous structure. Located at two sixty eight Laurel Lake Road.
Still moved, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, what is, is this the butts helps or is something else?
No, no, it's, it's.
It's the garage.
The garage, the, the, is it the garage yet, is the garage, right?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Why, why are we removing that?
I was asked to have it on my agenda.
This is a dangerous structure, looks like it's ready to fall over, played on this one.
Yeah, there's, there's a crack that go, goes from floor to the roof within it, um. We have reached out to the homeowner. Copious amounts of times, they have not responded back, we posted the property all three times.
The house, infrastructure on private property, it's not open to the public. Uh, i- i- if you choose to have a dilapidated cracked garage, isn't that your prerogative as a taxpayer?
Uh, they're considered attractive nuisances under both zoning and, uh, building laws, uh, kids, people who are. Obviously not gonna follow private property laws that are gonna jump, go onto a property.
But if you go past it, the garage door is always closed, so the front door is closed, it's attached to the house. I haven't seen a man door unless there's one in the back, so the, the garage door is closed unless someone's gonna break the windows and climb up through. How does that become a dangerous structure to the public?
Uh, you also.
Property that someone's paying taxes on.
There's the, the consideration of neighboring properties, so depending on how close that, uh, building is to a neighboring property, you don't want it to fall down and cause a damage.
It's not, it's, there's a, there's a road, so there's a road and then there's the ha, there's the garage with the house and then there's Laurel Lake. So it's easily fifty feet from another residence, that's. I'm not saying that we shouldn't enforce zoning regulations and dilapidated properties, but where is the line of. Personal taxpayer, if you want a cracked garage, that's you.
That's kind of the, the point of the, the investigative process, so we go in, we take a look, do we consider it that it's, uh, potential electric hazard? If there's still meters installed, uh, if there's wells or anything on the inside of the property, there's. A lot that we kind of consider when we're going into kind of these things, uh, and again, that's why we kind of draft that memo and then. Let the board kind of review it, they make the decision. And again, this is all under that, the dangerous structure.
Well, not only that, I can, okay, so I can understand if it's a large building that has numerous windows and. And doors, so means of egress in and out that someone could very easily break in. You're talking about a garage, the house is not dilapidated, the garage is. And unless you're gonna break the little four windows up top and climb through a hole this big, you're not getting in.
But, but you don't know if you, like Paul said, someone could cross the property, you don't know if they, somebody can get in, in the back, the sides. And not only that, the other, the properties. I think we have an ob, don't we have an obligation to protect people and not only?
On someone's personal property?
Well, just again, kids, whatever.
But on someone's personal property.
Alright, so you heard Paul talk about electricity, I'll take that, let's say it goes on fire, now we're subjecting our firemen to a potential, you know.
We were doing that regardless of whether it's dilapidated or not, you can have a perfectly good brand new home that catches on fire.
Alright, alright.
That's attached to it?
Oh, it doesn't matter.
It's, it's a detached.
They pay taxes, may or may not, might not, it might go to tax sale, that's not what I'm looking into, but I'm just saying it's the right of a tax pay.
That's the problem.
You want a broken garage, keep your broken garage.
Our only recourse then is to lean it and then it goes to tax sale and we either have to buy it to preserve our lean or.
Or pay to have the garage taken down and then it gets reassessed for taxes anyway. Because they lose the income on the garage.
What, have we sent the? Have we sent these people, uh, that, that, they just don't answer us? There's people there?
Uh, I don't know the, a hundred percent the exact history of it off the top of my head, but, uh, I can look that up for you. We have sent them multiple notices, both certified and regular mail with no response.
And who complained? Us? Did we get a neighbor complaint or is it the township driving around saying, that's gonna go? What's that?
So that's, that's the property in question, you can see there's a giant split. Through the building and you can see that the trusses are starting to bow out.
And there's nothing to the left of it, there's nothing behind it and the lake is on the right hand side and then further down the road, further down on the left, there's a road, it's, it's. Charles, what, what road is that? No, not Laurel Lake, that little, that little road.
Oh, uh.
Ruby, is that, what is that? Rose Lane, I think it is. But it's, it's to the community, it's to their houses, right?
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, just note that people who walk along the lake.
It's Marilu Lane.
Fish from the shore right next to the garage, so it's, it's, some of these later happened, garage were collapsed, also fish there walking by. It could pose a hazard, I. That's all I, that's all I, but.
Can you make that, can you make that like an aerial map? So we can see like the house. And the garage. Because I think if you're, if you're walking that close to that garage, you're, you're approaching on someone's personal property.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're on, so the garage is on the, the top side of that. So, so you'd be literally trespassing on someone's private property if you were anywhere within following distance of that garage.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be pursued myself.
It, it's, it's a sense of the board, I'm just saying, it's like. Where, where do we start and stop in government, so this is someone's personal property, so they have a crack in their garage, that's their prerogative.
What about the place across from Desaka that has a hole in their roof?
So again, so I, I think it's a case by case basis, because if you have numerous means of egress and. In and out of the building, you can break the windows, go in, those kinds of things, that's different, this is a, this is a detached garage.
The one of, the, the one on Bartonsville Avenue. They do keep going in there.
That is collapsing itself.
What?
That one is collapsing on itself.
In the back from the tree and then the kids are going in and out of the front door, so I see it.
If it's a nuisance and the police have been called numerous times, then absolutely, I think at some point as a, as the owner, you have to take somebody's responsibility.
Take care of this property, so this is, this is their deal. Tell them to tear it down or fix it or do.
Is there a motion here, is there a motion? In seconds or not?
I thi- I think you motioned, I think Mike seconded.
Who seconded?
Yeah, there was a motion and a second.
Who seconded? Mike?
Mike, yeah.
All in favor? Aye. Any nays? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Uh, Charles Kepler taxpayer, I'd just like to note that Commissioner Leap works for the property management company that oversees Pocono Laurel Lakes. Um, I, I feel that that may be a conflict of interest, I just figure it's worth noting, um, you know. I understand that she wants to advocate for the residents of the community as the, you know, the property management company. Um, but I, I hope that she's keeping that separate from her position as a commissioner on the board, thank you very much.
Motion failed.
Thanks.
Uh, uh, Leo, update on Archer Lane?
Wait, we have another one.
We have another one that needs to be voted on, that, that is the one that, that Commissioner Wyatt had referenced.
Yeah, a- and this is also the one, I mean, I, I, I'm already authorized to. Assist zoning and moving forward on these, um, I, this would be more of just an update that we will be working on moving forward to the. Magisterial District Judge, uh, regarding dangerous structure fines at two nine one four Bartonsville Avenue. Um, but I don't know that we need action.
Do we have a picture of that one?
This one's bad, it's got a tree took out the back of it.
Well, this one's fines, it's not, it's not a warrant to remove it.
Uh, this, this one, this one should be removed, this one's even.
But this is just funds right now, right?
Correct. This one is owned by a bank and they've been, uh, very reluctant to work with the township.
Leo, Archer Lane?
Yeah, Archer Lane, um, there is a discovery deadline for expert reports, Mister Tressler was, uh. Wrote us a very nice, uh, expert report and we're moving toward trial, which I believe is the beginning of next year. Learn Road easements, um, I checked with Lisa and I believe Alini has agreed to the original deal. That the township proposed, she is in agreement with that and is backing off all requests for additional monies.
Yeah.
That would be, uh. I believe all the easements that we need for that and then Tassel we discussed, uh, this evening at some lunch.
You can see her now. Hey Leo, I just have a question for you, probably legal, whether this is possible, but. But I'm not saying this would pass, but would you be able to craft an ordinance, uh, to prohibit sitting commissioners? To run for other elected positions while serving as a township commissioner?
I think the state would prohibit that, Rich, just generally speaking. That happens all the time.
It does.
Thank you. I'm sorry, yeah.
Anybody else have anything for Leo? Make a mostly adjourn. Is there a second? Certainly.
Did we make a decision on our boxes?
Yes.
What did we decide? Or what did you decide?
We're sticking with the, uh, ordinance.
You'd what?
We have approved the ordinance.
Okay, I just wanted to share with you that I went to the last Firemen's Association meeting where all the fire departments get together. And I asked them about it and they were, their attitude was basically like, that's the least you could do.
Yes, no kidding. I've been saying for months.
We got ours. Yes.
There a second?
Yep.
Second by, uh, Brian. Discussion. All in favor?